Good afternoon. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety, as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. My name is Zahir Bait, and I will be chairing today's session. Panel members today are Peter Reed, Philip Gosch, and Dylan Reed. And Deputy Secretary Treasurer today is Sabrina Salatino. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaab, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with a computer or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Today, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials wished to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Are there any declarations of interest of panel or staff for items in this time slot? Yes, Mr. Gosch?
Yes, I will recuse myself from item thirty because of a professional involvement with a different neighboring property.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gosch. And I see no other declarations. Any files to be closed this afternoon, Deputy Secretary?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Actually, yes. The agent is online, and it's for item number twenty-four, five A Norwood Road. They are requesting to withdraw their application. So we can probably deal with that at this time.
Okay, thank you.
And through you, Mr. Chair. I don't see any request for deferral.
Okay, great, thank you. Is the agent online yet? Mr. Masandrea, are you there? Good afternoon.
Hi.
How are you?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good, yourself?
Well, thank you. Could you just quickly give us a sense of your withdrawal? You're just withdrawing the application, I take it?
Yes, withdrawing the application. The planning department was unaware of our permit we were issued by the building department, and the client has decided to just withdraw the application altogether.
Thank you, perhaps another time. Thank you so much. Does this require a vote at all, or is this an automatic?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. We do have one speaker online. If we can just unmute and let them know what is happening.
Thank you. Hello, good afternoon.
Hi.
Hi, I'm not sure if you quite heard the applicant requesting withdrawal of his application.
I did. I have a question. Does this mean that they aren't moving forward with their plans to build the third story and do all the alterations?
Yes, exactly. They were drawing, so perhaps they may do something in the future, but at the moment, no.
Okay, and if we find that they are doing that, we can submit something to the city?
Through you, Mr. Chair. You can contact three-one-one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does this require a vote for withdrawal? Yeah, okay. So we'll take it to the committee, and if I can have a motion to approve the withdrawal?
Chair, I move that we approve the withdrawal of item twenty-four.
Thank you. Bear with me a second. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Do we have a second? Oh, Mr. Gosch, thank you. All those in favor of the withdrawal? Thank you. It's passed. You have your withdrawal, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number nineteen. Number nineteen is four-nine-seven dash four-nine-nine Danforth Avenue. It's an application for consent to sever. The consent requested to obtain consent to sever the property into two undersized mixed-use lots. Do we have the agent with us?
Through you, Mr. Chair. If you can just read into the record the materials that we have.
I beg your pardon, I forgot about that piece, thank you. The committee had before it the following communication: a copy of draft revised plan of survey, a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, part one and part two, two photographs of the subject property received June twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four, a covering letter from Mr. Khan, the agent, June twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-four, an order to comply, twenty thirteen fifty-six thirty-seven WNP zero-zero V one six affecting the subject property. We also have email correspondence from community planning, received December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, transportation engineering report, services report, received July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, and a staff report from engineering and construction services, received January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Through the Chair, we do have the agent online, and there are no other registered speakers.
Good afternoon, Mr. Khan, are you there?
Hello.
Hi, Ms. Khan.
Yeah, good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. We don't have anybody in opposition. We may or may not need a presentation. Let me just check with my colleagues to see if they have any questions, perhaps of you. No questions. Mr. Gosch?
So what's the reason for a severance, for seeking a severance here today?
Yeah, actually, this property both has actually separate addresses, also individual buildings, right? But the owner doesn't have this property already under separate ownership, right? It's both are under same ownership and doesn't have... Like, the owner wants to have the severance, so that can be separated even by the ownership.
Okay, is there an intention to sell one of the properties, or...
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. They want to have one property sold.
And when was the... So on the one property, there's the order to comply about the unit that was built without a permit. When was that unit built? Has it been there a long time, or not that...
Yeah, that was a long time. That was done a long time, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to suggest the answer to you. When was it done? Like, do you have... Do you know what you...
Actually, no, I don't have any idea, because I asked the owner, but he also doesn't have any specific date in a record, right? So I cannot say exact date, but it's a long time.
Is it the current owner that did it? Sorry, I'm just asking, is it the current owner that built the non-complying unit?
Hello? Hello?
Can you hear you? Do you hear the question?
Yeah, I heard the question. As I mentioned, that that was done more than five years, but I cannot... I didn't have able to have any date, a specific date, because owner herself doesn't have any record when that was done, right?
Okay.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if you... The question really was, did the current owner have this built, or was it a previous owner?
The ownership, they changed... The ownership actually changed under the company name, but the owner... Name of the owner is the... She, that Jabeta, she was the owner, same owner, but they assigned to the company name under the company.
So it's the current owner that was responsible for the construction without permit?
Yeah.
But can't remember when?
No, she didn't able to give me any date.
Oh, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Reed?
Yeah, sorry, on the narrow lot, just what's there at the moment? It wasn't entirely clear. Is it just that there's kind of a window, but there's nothing behind it, or...
No, that's the non-conforming unit. That's the one I was speaking about, I believe.
No, that's the bigger one, isn't it?
No.
No, I think it's the bigger one. Okay, well, that's a good thing to clarify.
Sure, yeah.
Sorry, which unit is the non-conforming unit on, and what is currently at four-nine-nine?
Yeah, four-nine-nine, it doesn't have any issue order to comply. We are just proposing to add a residential unit at third level, but the nonconformity notice that is ordered to comply is on the property four-nine-seven Danforth Avenue. On the second floor, there is a construction...
Okay, so what's currently there? I know there's a window from the street at four-nine-nine, but is there nothing behind it? Is that the case?
No, it's like they did the construction, but what we found, there is no tenant at the time, like last year. I don't know exactly now, but there is no tenant at the time, right? So just the construction done without the permit.
Okay.
It's a kind of vacant, yeah.
That doesn't really answer my question, but it's okay.
Any other questions, colleagues? I will take... Thank you, Mr. Khan. We'll take it into committee and come up with a decision. Oh, sorry, another question. Mr. Gosch has a question for you.
What's the nature of the wall separating these two units? Is it masonry?
Actually, yeah, that was not masonry, that is drywall, but we are proposing now building code, because we have the building permit application also. We are proposing this partition as per building code requirement of twenty-twenty-four building code requirement.
So the partition wall is going to be completely reconstructed?
Fire it, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Khan. We'll take it into committee now. Any thoughts, any comments, observations?
I'm happy to make a motion, but if my colleagues want to make comments first.
Okay. No, yeah, I think I explored my issues with the questions.
Yeah, the answers we got weren't entirely clear, but I think it's pretty straightforward. I know this property well, I live nearby. The narrow one is charming, and it'll be a very cozy studio for someone, which is a good thing. It's good to be adding a little bit of some additional living space in this very, you know, very walkable area. You know, it's very walkable, there's subway stations right nearby, there's absolutely no need for parking. I have no problem with the parking variances. So I would move that we approve the consent and the variances with the engineering conditions, but also with our usual note about not approving building without a building permit.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Reed, thank you. We have a motion to approve with conditions, standard engineering conditions, and for the record, do not approve of construction without building permits. Moved by Mr. Dylan Reed and seconded by Mr. Peter Reed. All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Khan, you have your approval.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and committee members.
Now we move on to item number twenty. Item number twenty is fifteen Warren Road. Purpose of the application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with an integral garage.
Through the Chair, the YouTube is back on.
Thank you. And we resume. The committee had before it copy of the minutes, March fifth, twenty-twenty-five, public hearing, and the materials submitted for consideration, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter from Betsy Williamson, the agent, received June twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, arborist report, received on March the sixth, twenty-twenty-five, planning rationale, letter prepared by Sean Galbraith, received June the twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, rendering view from fifty-eight Clarendon Avenue, from Betsy Williamson, agent, received June the twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, rendering views of seventeen and fifteen Warren Road, received from Betsy Williamson, June the twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, revised site plan, floor plans, and elevations, received July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, and agent email correspondence, revised drawings, received July the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. We also have staff report from Urban Forestry, received July the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, and an advisory staff report from Urban Forestry, received July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. We have correspondence in opposition from owners of... Solicitor on behalf of the owners of seventeen Warren Road, received July twenty-third, and from the solicitor on behalf of the owners and occupants of fifty-eight Clarendon Avenue, received July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. We also have materials in opposition from solicitor on behalf of seventeen Warren Road, received July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. I believe that's all.
Through the Chair, we have the agent here in person, as well as there are speakers in opposition as well.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for your patience. If you could give us your name and address, please.
Betsy Williamson.
Can you just hit the button, can't hear you?
Betsy Williamson.
Perfect, thank you.
Architect at Williamson Williamson, Inc., two-thirty-five Carlaw, in the East End.
We'll need a presentation, because we have people in opposition.
Of course. During the hearing for fifteen Warren Road on March fifth, a deferral was granted by this committee to provide us an opportunity to consult with the neighbors in Urban Forestry to address their issues and concerns. I will outline those discussions and review the associated variances in my presentation this afternoon. In discussion with a neighbor at seventeen Warren Road, we have agreed to shift the house point-three meters south to reduce the perceived impact of the proposed house, and this has resulted in the removal of variance eight from the previous application regarding the one-point-two-meter side yard setback, and we are now in compliance with that setback. Views showing the revised house location were shared to help visualize this reduced impact, highlighting not only the increase in side yard setback, but also the sidewall height on the north side, which is below the allowable height, as both items reduce the volume of adjacent to their home. As we know, the as-of-right envelope is much larger than the existing house that's on the site, and that impact was discussed. We included these views in the folder. The context of our length and depth variances is best explained on pages seven and eight of the Galbraith report, which are pages seventy-two and seventy-three in the staff binder. If you could bring up page... Your page seventy-two? Perfect, thank you. This page seven of Mr. Galbraith's report shows how, in this home, the building length is divided into three parts. Closest to the street, we are relocating the parking to below grade, removing the existing garage that overlaps deeply into the front yard setback, improving the condition there. The visible portion of the home above the fence line is eighteen-point-three-two meters long in the kind of greenish-blue color, just one-point-three-two meters over the seventeen meters allowable. The small one-story extension at the back contributes to additional length, that's in yellow, but does not generate significant impacts on the abutting properties. It is below the fence line. On page eight, which is the next page in that binder, we see in red the number of houses on Warren Road that are longer than our two-story-plus gable, three-story portion of the house. This house is within the low-end range of development on this street. If you turn back two pages on Mr. Galbraith's page six, we see the sidewall variance illustrated. It's worth noting that this variance we're asking for is a cut within the space of the gable roof, and otherwise, we are well below the allowable sidewall height, which reduces the visual impact of the house. This cut, and the cut is shown in blue there, that's the variance we're asking for, is to create a deck, and overlooked privacy from this deck was a concern of the neighbors to the south at fifty-eight Clarendon. We had several meetings with the owners and their arborists, and we have addressed concerns of privacy by providing a five-foot-high privacy screen at the third-floor deck, translucent glass block at the large bathroom window, and privacy blinds for the bedroom window facing south on that elevation. We have amended the plans in this application with language about the windows and privacy screen. In the meeting with the arborist, we agreed on a plan for excavation during the foundation work. This email is included in the package that we're presenting on screen, just in a second. And we ask that the committee acknowledges these amendments as conditions of the approval of this application. This is for our benefit and for the neighbor's benefit at fifty-eight. Could you please bring up the PDF in the extra late materials folder? That is the agent correspondence, please. Thank you. First in this PDF is an email from Urban Forestry indicating they are not objecting to this application, and given conditions, which are the bullet points below, that we are happy to comply with. Some of this work has started, and the conditions are a tree protection plan showing overdigging and shoring, indicating distance from the tree trunk on the north side of the driveway for the Norway maple, construction details, and a proposed replanting plan that provides soil volume. So we will be submitting all that to Urban Forestry. If you page through the next couple of pages, you can see that this work has already started. We've attached the shoring drawing on the north side, we just had gotten that in, showing the existing garage foundation relative to the tree and also relative to the new foundation. So these things are all three overlapping. These discussions will continue with both Urban Forestry and the arborists for the three properties. The last email in the package summarizes the meeting, where Adam and Laurie, sitting here, the homeowners, agreed to the arborist's recommendations for excavation on the south-side foundation wall, and there's a list of three or four recommendations there. We will stay in contact with the arborist and ensure that they are part of the work moving forward, and Urban Forestry also has indicated that that is on us. So overall, we have addressed the reasons for this deferral by maintaining privacy and reducing the impact of the proposed project. In addition, we've had positive and now ongoing conversations with Urban Forestry. In the interim, we also engaged Sean Galbraith of Galbraith and Associates to ensure that we're keeping a project, creating a project that's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and to ensure that the variances are truly minor. And in the spirit of the official plan, his report is attached. He will not speak unless required during the rebuttal period. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Let me just see if colleagues have any questions at this point. If not, we'll hold it until later. No? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much.
Through the Chair, we can have the in-person speaker at the address seventeen Warren Road.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee.
Good afternoon. Name and address, please.
My name is David Nelligan, N-E-L-I-G-A-N. I'm a lawyer at Erdnberlis at one-eighty-one Bay Street, Unit eighteen-hundred.
And you're speaking on behalf of, I take it, one of the...
Yes, sir, I'm speaking on behalf of the owner of seventeen Warren Road, which is the property immediately adjacent to the north.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Five minutes, go ahead.
Thank you. If I could ask for my presentation to be brought up on the screen, I'll just go through it relatively quickly. So as mentioned, my name is David Nelligan. I'm here on behalf of the owner of seventeen Warren. If you can go to the next slide, I'll situate you. Seventeen Warren is immediately adjacent to the north, highlighted in green there. My client is opposed to this proposal as a whole, but the primary focus of my presentation to you today will be on the length and depth variances before you. The proposed building length is twenty-nine-point-seven-eight meters. If you could go to the next slide, please. That's twelve-point-seven-eight meters, or seventy-five percent greater than the as-of-right permitted length of seventeen meters. It's also two-point-five-seven meters beyond the permitted depth of nineteen meters. Now, the applicant is asking you to consider this house as three separate elements: a below-grade extension under the driveway, a three-story portion above the grade, and a one-story rear extension. And when they break it into those individual components, they're able to say, you know what? The impact of this is not so bad. They even say in Mr. Galbraith's memo that the three-story portion of the house would represent the second smallest approved length variance if it was considered separately. But through you, Mr. Chair, this committee cannot consider each portion of this house separately. Building length and building depth regulations in the zoning bylaw apply to all main walls of a building above and below ground. There is no separate zoning provision addressing length above grade. The clear intention of the bylaw is to regulate length both above and below ground, and to ignore that clear intention would be contrary to the general intent and purpose of a zoning bylaw. If this variance is approved, Mr. Chair, it would represent the largest variance approved by this committee in both the immediate and the broader context. Can you go to the next page or slide, please? The applicant is suggesting that there's really no impact to the... Now, the applicant is suggesting that there's really no impact to these length and depth variances, and I think that's inaccurate. If you can go to the next slide, sorry. The subterranean garage will be constructed clearly within the tree protection zone of the front yard tree that belongs to our client. You can see it on the image there. To be clear, my client does not consent to the injury or removal of this tree to accommodate development. Now, both parties have engaged qualified arborists, and there is a disagreement between those arborists that the excavation can be done safely without harming the tree. This underground garage as well represents what would be termed an iceberg house, which is a house where the below-ground footprint is greater than the above-ground footprint. And this committee will well know that city staff have had serious concerns with iceberg houses recently identifying potential impacts of injuries to mature trees, limitation on planting opportunities, soil permeability, drainage, groundwater, et cetera. So to suggest that there's no impact at the front of the house, I believe is incorrect. Can you go to the next slide, please? My client's primary concern is the impact at the rear of the house. This represents a view from the second-floor bedroom of my client's property overlooking the outdoor amenity space and his patio space. The added length and depth of the north-facing exterior main wall will impose its mass along this property line, effectively walling off that rear amenity. If you can go to the next page, please. And here's another, the next page represents another view from my client's kitchen window. Now, my client previously proposed alternative designs that would mitigate this impact to the applicant, but the applicant was not interested in discussing those. They have, during the deferral period, moved the house thirty centimetres back, but in our submission, Mr. Chair, that thirty-centimetre move does nothing to mitigate the impact of this additional length and depth. Can you go to the last slide, please? So, as you know, Mr. Chair, the reason we're here is to discuss the four tests of the Planning Act, and if only one of those tests of the Planning Act are not met, then the application must be refused. My client retained MHBC planners, who produced a very detailed and comprehensive planning report that concluded the following. One, the requested variance, both individually and cumulatively, are not minor in nature. We talked about impact. We had also talked about the degree of the variance from the zoning standard, which in this case is extreme. They also concluded that the requested variances represent overdevelopment that is not desirable or appropriate, and that the requested variances do not maintain the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. MHBC conducted a neighbourhood study identifying both the immediate and broader context. They analysed this, they provided details, and they concluded that the proposal does not meet the general intent and purpose of the official plan because it is out of character of the neighbourhood. So my submission to you, Mr. Chair and committee, is that on the strength of this analysis, you refuse the application. But even in the alternative, we have expert evidence, conflicting expert evidence in hand at this hearing, and the only way to effectively test that evidence is at the Toronto local appeal body. You know and I know that I cannot appeal, but the only avenue to get there is for refusal.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We do have a couple of questions. Mr. Reed, Mr. Dylan Reed.
Yeah, the applicant characterised the breakfast nook as being below the fence line. Would you agree with that characterisation?
I do. There is a difference in grade between seventeen and fifteen, and so the top, I believe that the top of the breakfast nook effectively is at the same level as the fence line.
So the breakfast nook wouldn't have an impact on your client?
Not from the ground level.
Okay, great. And so, sorry, I don't have the detailed plans, but just from the map, it looks like your client's house on the north side actually extends quite deeply. Does it extend as far as what they're proposing or further?
No. So the view I showed you from the kitchen is the furthest extent of that house, and it's not quite as far as the proposed length and depth. However, what the existing house at fifteen and the existing house at seventeen both do is they both step back and arrange their massing away from each other so that there's sort of a joint area where they can both benefit from their outdoor amenity space. So my client's length is at the maximum permitted, but it's cut back so that there's an open space in between, and that's mirrored by the existing condition at seventeen, which will no longer be present if this application is approved.
Understood. Thank you.
I do have one question, but I just need to ask staff to just go back one slide, just the slide prior, previous to this one. We just need the one prior to this.
Through the chair, this computer is really slow.
Okay, no problem. Perfect. Thank you, Stanley. Thank you. Just a question. The image on the right-hand side, does the blue represent the one-storey flat roof at the rear that Mr. Galbraith is talking about, or is this the entire house that you're looking at?
So the blue represents the main wall of the three-storey portion, and the red represents the gabled roof. So you cannot see the additional extension of the breakfast nook from this view, which is, as I directed to Mr. Reed, behind the fence to the left. So the building actually continues further than what you can see.
Further down, okay. And you just said you haven't shown it on this image.
Right. And what's also not shown is the proposed pool cabana, which will also be up along the fence line at the left of that picture.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for the clarity. Any other questions at this point? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else?
Yes, Dennis Wood, you have been unmuted.
Hello, good afternoon, Mr. Wood.
Can I be heard?
Hi, we can hear you very well. If you could just have your name and address, please.
Sure. Dennis Wood. I am a lawyer with the law firm of Wood Bull. The address is sixty-five Queen Street West, Suite fourteen-hundred in Toronto.
Thank you. And you're representing?
I'm representing Cynthia and Ian Webb, who are the owners of fifty-eight Clarendon Avenue, which is, which abuts to the south fifteen Warren.
Thank you.
Has very long south lotline and abuts a number of houses that front on Clarendon. My client's property, that's a very, thank you very much, staff for that, that's the most useful exhibit for you to look at. So my client is the owner of the backyard in the trees.
Thank you. If we can have your presentation, you've got five minutes.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. I appeared in front of you in March on behalf of my client to object to this proposal. At that time, the main concerns that were expressed by my client had to do with the length and depth of the building and related overview and privacy questions. There's a third-story deck of substantial size that would overlook their yard. There were also several windows on the second floor of size that would have overlooked their yard. The obvious mitigation that we're looking at is vegetation. So my client at that point and now was concerned that whatever construction occurs would not affect detrimentally that mitigation, being the vegetative screen. So there have been conversations that have occurred between the parties in regard to those three matters. Fortunately, the parties have been able to reach an accommodation on the three, and I would just note the following. The Ms. Williamson's office filed four plans, four drawings, that represent amendments to facilitate the higher privacy screen that she spoke of, and also a glass block window that would face to the south. You can see the clouds that represent the revised language that achieved the purpose of the amendments. And I would request that the committee, in approving the plans, the drawings, approve the consolidated drawings, if I can call them that, what was filed in June the twentieth, as amended with the plans that were filed on July the twenty-fourth, these being the three numbered plans. And Ms. Williamson and I are on agreement that that's an appropriate way to proceed. Now, so we've dealt with the overlook and the glass block window, and the second window that you see there is the window that will, they have agreed to provide blinds that will mitigate the possibility of overview. The third item had to do with the vegetation, and in Ms. Williamson's presentation, she referred to a document, an email which I had sent to her following a meeting on-site between arborists representing my client and arborists for the applicant. And my client's arborist had suggested a protocol in regard to investigating the effect of the basement construction on the tree roots. And so this protocol is, I think, a fair protocol. Whoops, could we have it back again? Sorry. That's the wrong one. We need, we need the, can you go back to where you were a minute ago? That's not our, yeah, thank you. So there's, there should be five, I think, they're numbered four here, but those are the, is the protocol that has been accepted by the owner. We had requested it be made a condition of the approval of the variances. The owner is in principle and in purpose to commit it to these, as I've been assured by Ms. Williamson. And so therefore, with those three matters in hand, Mike, I'm instructed by my client, as is stated in this letter, to advise the committee that they are no longer objecting to the proposal, as these are acceptable matters of mitigation. So I would request, as has Ms. Williamson, that the approval of the committee be subject to conditions having to do with this protocol and also in regard to the, that the drawings be substantially in accordance with, sorry, the approval, the, in the building that's to be built and in accordance with the approval be substantially in accordance with the drawings. So such twenty questions that you have, I hope that's clear. And I would like to express my client's appreciation for, you know, the cooperative process. They still are not happy with the longer building, but acknowledge that these mitigative measures, in particular the tree protection commitment, go a long way to meeting their concerns. So thank you very much.
Thank you kindly. Bear with me, we do have one question for you. My colleague has a question for you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, first to the Secretary Treasurer. Would I be correct in assuming that the conditions that have been put up on the screen here would be difficult or problematic for us to impose, as there's no city department that would enforce compliance?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Okay, so then my question to the agent is, having heard that, and firstly, I think it's, I'd commend you and the applicant, or your clients and the applicant, for coming to what seems to be a reasonable solution. If we do end up approving this application, though, there's nothing we can do reasonably to impose these conditions. So I just put it to you, you made it sound as though their non-opposition was conditional on that. It sounds as though the property owners are all in agreement. Is that, does this present any problems to you?
No. It would be my client's preference that it be a condition, but the parties have proceeded in good faith. Ms. Williamson has provided me with both oral and written confirmation that her client is fully committed to this, and I call this protocol, this protocol. And so in that, in the context of that good faith, my client is accepting of the situation.
Yes, and I'd note that this is now in the public record. There's a recording of this meeting, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gosch. Thank you kindly. Are there any other questions for this? Nope? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else in opposition? Nope, that's it? Okay. So if we could have the agent back again, please, and have you respond to the questions at hand. Sorry, button, please.
Our response will be done by Mr. Galbraith. He's online.
Okay. Mr. Galbraith, are you there?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Galbraith. Name and address, please.
Sean Galbraith, eighteen King Street East, Suite fourteen-hundred, Toronto.
Thank you very much. You going to provide some rebuttal?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Very pleased that the owner of the subject property and the neighbours at fifty-eight to the south were able to come to some agreements. I think that shows good faith and that everybody's trying to work through a process to come to a design that will work for at least as many people as possible. With regards to Mr. Nelligan's comments, it seems to primarily be about the length and the depth of the three-story portion of the building. He conceded that there doesn't seem to be any impact from the one-story rear bump out, and I agree that there isn't any. It seems to be below the height of the fence. And so the, what I didn't really, I don't think I really heard was, other than having to sort of see the building, I didn't really hear anything in terms of what the actual impact of the length and depth would be, like, there's no shadow impact because of the significant gabling of the roof. That, you know, the sort of the typical thing that you would expect to hear. There's no privacy, real overlook concerns there. The balcony is really far inset in. And so if we look at the actual massing itself, building depth, I think, is the primary control here, because that's how deep into the property does the building sit. And since we've already conceded that the one-story portion doesn't really have any impact, so what is the impact of the three-story portion of the house? And the three-story portion of the house has a building depth of eighteen-point-three-two metres, which complies with the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw allows for nineteen metres building depth, so an as-of-right building depth could theoretically have more impact than the third, three-story massing of what is proposed by this. With regards to the front and the below-grade parking space, first of all, note that it's not a reverse slope driveway. There's a parking elevator inside the garage that would go down, and then the car would back up into the space. Urban forestry does not object, as was provided by Ms. Williamson, to the proposed below-grade addition. And I'm quite confident that a condition to obtain a tree injury permit would very appropriately control that process, and I think it would be appropriate to impose that condition should the committee seek to approve it. The existing condition is frankly quite strange, where you have this front garage that you can see in my, in my planning report, a photo of the existing condition with this garage that sticks way out in the front. There's no, there's no loss of planting space because the existing condition is a garage, and the future condition would be an as-of-right driveway. The, any impacts to the existing tree on the neighbour's property are largely an existing condition of the existing footprint of the house and the footprint of the existing garage. In any event, the tree permit process will effectively account for such matters. I think that was the gist of the comments that I heard, but if I've missed any... But if I've missed any, I am more than happy to respond to any. Please draw my attention to it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dylan Reed has a question for you.
Just one point of clarification. You mentioned, you mentioned the as-of-right depth is 19, but isn't the as-of-right depth 17 based on, I think also based on your graphic with the purple?
Did I? No, the as-of-right length is 17 and the as-of-right depth is 19.
Okay.
Let me just go.
I'm just basing it also, like, your as-of-right depiction indicates it a bit shorter than what the plan is.
Mm-hmm. Which, sorry, which?
Rear yard view, pink massing shown as a right condition.
So in, could we, referring to this on screen here?
I'm referring to the rendering views of 17 and 15 Warren Road, I think you sent.
That would, the architect would have provided.
Oh, that would be the architect.
Let's see.
Yeah, there.
So that is the front of the house?
But the, I'm looking, the next one over, I think.
Let's go to the back. Let's have a look.
Yeah. They're showing as-of-right with it a little, extending a little bit. And I think the architect also said that it's, you know, even the above is slightly 1.3 meters longer than the as-of-right.
I, that actually doesn't look correct. If you go to the, which is odd for me to say, I admit, if you go to the site plan, please, zoom in there, if you don't mind. Or even my, my report is highlighted a little bit easier. The variance for, there's that front weird garage. Scroll down, keep going. It would be page, page nine of that report.
Yeah, you.
There we go. There we go. So if you zoom in there, the blue area is the area of depth variance. That dashed line on its left side, if it could be scrolled up, you can see that that is the permitted building depth of 19 meters.
Okay.
So, yeah. And we are, the three-story massing of that is, it's before we hit that line. 18.32, I believe. So in terms of the portion of the building that would generate impacts, it doesn't, it doesn't hit the permitted, the permitted depth under the bylaw.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
But it does length, but that's only because of the below-ground front parking.
Well, length is from the below-ground parking to the back of the, the back of the one-story addition.
Yeah.
So yes, length would include both of those features, two of which, as acknowledged, don't really create significant impacts.
So it extends beyond the length, but not the depth?
The three-story portion.
The top-story portion?
Correct. Yes, that is, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galbraith.
It's possible that the rendering showed length and not depth.
Yeah, it, yeah, there seems to be a lot of mixing up of those.
That would be my, that would be my guess.
Thank you. I do have a quick question for you. I was looking at the previous decision, and I think that's March 17, 2021, where there were only three variances requested. And one of them was for length and the other was for depth. And at that time, the length was 24.46 meters. And similarly, the depth was 24.47. And now, you're, bear with me while I just go back to this one. Your building length is now 29.78. While the depth is actually less, but the length is a lot greater. And I take it the length, as you mentioned a moment ago, it's the underground garage in the front, that may account for part of it. Would that be correct?
I don't, I wasn't involved in the previous decision application, so I simply don't know the answer to that. Perhaps Ms. Williamson might know?
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions for Mr. Galbraith? None? Okay. Thank you very much. We're good.
You're welcome.
There are no other speakers, I take it at this point? Okay. Perhaps we can take it into committee at this point and look for some discussion. Perhaps I'll start off with one of my concerns about this particular application. And it's to do with the variance number three, the building length, which really is related to the underground front yard parking garage. I'm not sure if the applicant is aware that about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, just a couple of hearings ago, we had a similar request for an underground garage in the driveway. And the argument presented at the time is essentially we've got a concrete bunker in a space that should be intended for water percolation, and this won't allow for it. That application, by the way, was refused on that, wasn't refused. Fortunately, the agent and the owner were here, and they decided to change the length. So they made an amendment, deleted that portion of their request, and reduced the length to match the depth. So that, for me, is the main concern. We are talking, I think, as the previous, one of the applicant's solicitors addressed, the idea of iceberg structures. And my understanding is that by the end of this year, council will perhaps come up with some more definitive answer. But in the meantime, my concern is that the drainage issues are real. So this is one piece that I cannot support. I cannot support that length. The other pieces, not so bad, but certainly the length I find very difficult to support. I'm not sure.
Yeah, so my comment on that, so I happen to be here at the previous hearing, and the underground garage portion was actually a large part of what we discussed at the previous hearing as well, having to do specifically with the Norway maple, that now it sounds like forestry is satisfied, can be dealt with, with the application to injure. I think I would take a slightly different view about the length variance in the underground parking spot in this particular case. I don't have the benefit of the previous, having heard the previous one that, where it was an issue. But I think exactly the logic that your, of your argument would apply if one of the variances we were looking to approve involved landscaping, front yard landscaping percentage, because that's the zoning requirement that usually is meant to protect against, protect the built environment from water issues. But I, but I don't see a front yard landscaping variance where we're on a street with a very significant amount of soft landscaping. And even with the length and depth variances, this home will still have quite a fair bit of soft landscaping at the front and at the rear. And I'm also sort of guided by the fact that, as currently constructed, 100% of the area that will be, or approximately, I'm not sure, but approximately the area that will be the below-grade garage is presently an above-grade garage that also doesn't present any water penetration opportunity. So that, those would be the reasons why I defer. I think the application has been improved by increasing the separation distance with the home to the north. The length and depth both are quite large for the city as a whole, but not so large for these homes in Forest Hill and, I'm not quite sure what this neighborhood just south of Forest Hill calls itself, but this area as well. So personally, I think it's supportable as, as it's come with the forestry condition, and forestry has issued an advisory report saying they might not grant that permit if the issues can't be mitigated.
Any other observations, comments?
I think, I mean, first of all, I think it's great that we're getting rid of the garage on the surface. I think that's a big bonus. That's a strange protrusion, which I don't think is great. And if you look at the plans, like, it's really hitting only the edge of the tree protection area, and it seems like forestry feels like it can be protected. And I think really the crucial thing is it's actually underneath the driveway. So as my colleague was saying, it's not really affecting the soft landscaping. I think if it was underneath soft landscaping, I think that'd be a much bigger issue. And it has been in other cases. But it's underneath the driveway, it's not really permeable anyway. In terms, so also, I think the fact that the roof slopes is really significant. I think that really reduces the massing impact. And overall, like, the actual length, it's slightly longer than allowed in terms of the three-story section, but the depth, you know, of the three-story section is a bit, is a bit below, you know, this is sort of zoning, in a zoning gray zone, as it were. But it's not really that much longer than I think is typical. And I think the, it's important also that the breakfast nook is basically under the fence line and isn't having an impact. I have to say, I find the frontage really ugly with this one window slightly askew, but we're not here to make aesthetic judgments. But I think overall, like, the massing, especially with the, with the steep slope, that really mitigates the massing effect on the neighbors. And also, I very much appreciate the privacy agreement with the other neighbors. And I think with those privacy things that, you know, that really addresses those issues. So aspects of this plan are creative, aspects of this plan are ones I wouldn't be so excited about, but I think overall, it's supportable. And I think it, taking off that garage in the front, which is kind of like a, kind of carbuncle in front of the house, is a big advantage. So I think that really actually improves, improves this property. So I think it's supportable. I think we will be tying it to plans as requested. There's the July 24 plans. And of course, we'd want to do that too, to make sure that the length and depth really apply specifically to the underground portion and to the, to the one-story breakfast nook.
Mr. Reed?
No, I have nothing further to add. I agree with both Dylan and Phil's points.
If I may, just before we go into looking for a motion, just comment on, I agree with both my colleagues here have mentioned that the underground garage portion, the proposed underground garage in the driveway has got nothing to do with a variance related to soft landscaping. However, I think in the grand scheme of Toronto, and not only Toronto, but elsewhere, what we're beginning to see is the lack of percolation into groundwater, ground tables, water tables. And this structure, which is not really necessary from my perspective, but then I'm not the homeowner, I think that's the argument that we have with structures like these that extend beyond the existing. We've seen them before, where we have large garages underneath the rear yard as well, similar issues. Ideally, you want to have, and even the driveway, I would like to hopefully see that the driveway itself is produced out of permeable material so that you have that percolation. This, of course, will prevent that, but that would be my argument for not supporting this particular variance. Having said all of that, let's take it, I'm sorry, I think I've kicked something underneath, take it into committee and look for a motion.
Yeah, I do appreciate your comments, but I stand by my own view as expressed, and I would move to approve it subject to forestry condition number two and to tying to the plans.
Through you, Mr. Chair, all plans, site plans, floor plans, elevations?
Site plans, elevations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Specifically the July, including the July 24th. Or is that, that's?
Yeah, the most recent.
The most recent.
The most revised set of plans, yes.
Thank you. We have a second now. Mr. Reed, thank you, Dylan Reed, seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? I oppose. Thank you. You have your approval, ma'am. Thank you. Moving on to item number 21. And item number 21 is 118 Givens Street. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-and-one-half-story detached dwelling by enclosing a portion of the existing front porch, also to construct a front second-story The committee had before it the following communications. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Four photographs of the subject property received on June 11, 2025. We also have an Arborist's report received on July 22. Presentation materials received from the agent on July 22, 2025. And we have support documentation, a seven-signature petition in support, signed by owners and occupants of properties Given Street and Horton Street, received July 22, 2025. One signature petition in support received July 22, 2025.
Mr. Chair, we have the agent online, and there are no speakers for this item.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Ms. Durazo.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. Could we get your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Diana Durazo. I'm from Replacement Design, and I'm the agent representing the owners at 118 Given Street.
Thank you very much. Let me just see if we need a presentation, if we have any questions? No questions, no need for presenting. One question for you.
I just have a question. Am I correct in understanding that the plans actually will add some soft landscaping to the, the front soft landscaping?
Yes, that's the intention.
Okay, so there's going to be more now than there is, in the future than there is at the moment?
Yes, the existing, if you go to the presentation, page three, existing is five 498 square meter, and we are proposing going up to 13.8 square meters.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Any other questions? It's a fairly straightforward application. Both your variance requests are minor, and variance number two is largely in existing circumstance. We'll take it into committee and look for a response. Ms. Reed, Dylan Reed, go.
Yeah, I'm happy to move approval of these variances. I'm, the, the building will, the extended porch will still be behind the building next door, so I don't really think it has any impact. And I really very much approve of the fact that they're going to improve the front yard soft landscaping, which is fairly limited. So I think this is a great proposal, and I move that we approve it with the conditions.
Thank you very kindly. Do we have a second now? Thank you, Mr. Reed. Mr. Dylan Reed moves motion to approve. Mr. Peter Reed seconds. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Take care. And we move on to item number 22. Item number 22 is 22 Strader Avenue. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a front one-story addition, including a walkout basement, and a complete second story, second-floor addition with a front balcony, also to reconstruct the covered front porch with stairs. There will be a total of two residential units, dwelling units on this lot. Committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. There's a reason for. There's a revised site plan, floor plans and elevations, received July 23, 2025. Three photographs of the subject property received June 11, 2025. An arborist's report received June 19, 2025. Presentation materials received from the agent on July 23, 2025. Covering letter received from the agent July 24, 2025. And supporting materials from the same agent received July 24, 2025. We also have urban forestry report dated July 23, 2025. And we have our correspondence in opposition from 20 Strader Avenue, received July 22. And from, oh, both of them are from, two pieces of correspondence, both from 20 Strader Avenue.
Through you, Chair, we have the agent online, and there are online opposition speakers as well.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Stambock, are you there?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair. My name is Ozzren Stambock. I'm at 15 Marland Road.
Lovely, thank you. We'll need a very quick presentation from you, because we do have folks in opposition.
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Chair. And thank you for, committee members and Mr. Chair, for your time today. So for this application, we do have a number of variances, but they have to be looked at in relation to the existing footprint of the bungalow, much of which is being preserved. And also, this application has to be considered against the as-of-right envelope and massing that would be allowed without variances. And I would ask staff to pull up my presentation materials, which they already have, thank you very much. And I will use this to show some of our variances, and also to show how we put effort into mitigating the impact of this proposal through various decisions. And that's kind of a central point I want to make, is that although we have many variances, many of them are actually this effort to make this less impactful. So one of the first decisions we made was to not simply use the as-of-right envelope that is seen here in the blue rectangle, which would not actually need any side yard setback variances if we went in line with the existing brick walls. Now, instead, we decided to use the existing main floor footprint and make the second-story wider in order to fit the upstairs bedrooms. And you can see the outline of the new second floor built over the existing main floor in red, and the one-story front addition on these drawings. To me, this very clearly describes my central point. The proposed design has less massing than the as-of-right massing, and is more considerate of the neighborhood. Despite the opposition from number 20 Strader, this is much more considerate of what we're proposing. But that's, doesn't really just stop there. And if staff can flip to page two, I can show this in the side elevations. So here we see the blue dash, blue dash outline of the as-of-right elevation in relation to the proposed elevation. And the as-of-right elevation allows a much higher building and sidewall, sidewalls at a full height of 11 meter, that would block much more light. We have a, above our, above our wall height, we have a sloped roof, but this could be full-height walls. And here, we also see that we, you know, it was a decision not to maximize the length of this, of this duplex, which means we can have a bigger backyard, which we want, that's good advantage for us, but it also means the rear back wall has less impact. It's not sticking out as far from the neighbor's wall and not creating a boxed-in effect. And from experience, this is always a contentious design decision that often comes up as a variance, as it just did for Warren Road. But in this case, it's actually permitted to make the building around 63, 62 feet long, so 19 meters, and we wouldn't have a rear yard setback variance. So what we have done is better for the neighbors. And I really want them to understand that before they come on the call, that what we are doing is better than what is allowed. And even though we have a small variance for the size of the balcony, another thing they objected to, we decided to put it at the front of the house for better privacy and not to create overlook onto the rear yard. Another aspect that is generally hated by neighbors, and from experience, I knew we should avoid this, so we opted to put it in the front. You know, where it's not overlooking their rear yard. And next on this page, we can see that our front yard setback is actually being taken, no, on the previous page, sorry, staff, I'm still not finished with that one. One page down, please. And there, you can see our front yard setback is being taken from the roof, from the roof and wall feature that is sticking out more than the front wall of the one-story front addition. And that has to be looked at in relation to the first floor and second floor main wall, which are actually set further back from the front yard than the minimum amount. And if staff could just zoom out a little bit on this page, we can just, or go to the back, we can also see the variance we have for the backyard, for the back deck. Despite this variance, the deck quickly steps down from the main floor level to a lower platform. And, and we only have this variance because that much lower platform is connected to the higher deck that is meant to hold the barbecue, et cetera. And I'll end now, open to any questions you can have, but there's a lot more to say about these variance, but, variances, but really, it comes back to the, to the same point I'm trying to make. It's really our variances, and as I'm sure that if you were to approve us, you would tie us to the elevations, they're actually restricting us in some ways than, than what would be allowed as-of-right. So, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm curious to hear the neighbor's opposition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stambock. Let me just see, my colleagues have any questions for you? Okay, none at the moment. We'll move on to the folks in opposition. Hello, good afternoon.
Hello.
Hi, good afternoon. Before I ask you to introduce yourselves, you're from the same address, so will both of you be speaking for five minutes or just one person? Are you going to share the five minutes?
Because they have addressed the different issues.
But you're calling from the same address?
Yes.
So you've got five minutes. Can you decide to share that?
Yes, if I have some leftover time, yes, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that?
Yes, but I would prefer to have two presentations, but I would like to start with mine, if possible.
I'm sorry, I still didn't quite catch that.
Sorry, Vera, you're going to be speaking for two and a half minutes, and then Andrew will be speaking for two and a half minutes?
I would like to speak like maybe three minutes, and Andrew will add another two minutes. Is it okay?
Yes, as long as it adds up to five.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wonderful. So if you could just, please, give us your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Vera Chiripanova, and I live on 20 Strader Avenue.
Thank you. And you're, and Andrew, could you do the same, please?
Andrew, I'm here, Andrew. Here, you know, here, trying to go on computer, okay.
I'm Andrew Cherfenev. I also live at 20 Strader Avenue.
Thank you very kindly. Vera, we'll let you go first.
Yes, please. So can I start?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the proposed project has gross violation of my property law and safety and privacy. According to the deeds of my house, nothing can be built on the ground or above our mutual driveway. In the project presented by owner of 22 Strader Avenue, the platform is 41 centimeter with Route 62 overhanging the mutual driveway. This is direct violation of Ontario Act of the Right of Use, the Mutual Property, and my deeds of the house. So this platform has deprived me from the sunlight in my kitchen, this is like second slide, and violate my rights for enjoyment of life. During winter, there will be lots of icicles hanging close to the middle of the space between houses, which pose great danger for everyone walking there. In Ontario, constructions on or above a mutual driveway, which is legally considered easement, is not permitted. The city of Toronto also has easement for this driveway. It's, it's only way to reach the city protected trees on my backyard and the utility pole located on the 22 Strader backyard. City and Bell used tall vehicles to trim the trees and repair the pole wires. The overhanging platform will block that. Also, the space we need to repair second floor if, for both houses, if needed. So the platform over the mutual driveway is illegal, and it will violate my rights and also rights of the city. So the consultation with two real estate lawyers who studied the title deeds and the survey confirmed that the building on this overhanded platform is illegal, and the letter of demand will be sent immediately if the project is approved. The second step will be seeking the court law to stop the construction. Also, my grand concern is that construction will block the entrance to my garage, my garage, and damage my property. So I want the construction team to provide the specific details on how they plan to manage the construction without violation the easement terms. My biggest safety concern is the steep 1.7 meters downstairs, starting right from the mutual driveway, less than 1.4 meters from the entrance to my house, and 70 centimeters from the property line. The proposed hole is also two meters wide. It's so out of character of the neighborhood, it can easily to lead someone, a personal bike, or wheelchair, or pedestrian having an accident and falling into that unexpected hole, especially if the surface is slippery. And during snowfall, the tenants who rent the basement will be trapped in the hole accumulate snow, and during rain, there will be a potential flood. So the entrance on the stairs might be, must be relocated.
Vera, sorry to interrupt you, but do you want Andrew to speak?
Deaf trap.
You only have one and a half minutes.
No, no, I just probably take the last minute, because this is privacy. They propose six giant windows, and two of them overlook my bedroom, because my house second floor is much shorter, and will be direct view around two meters from those windows to my bedroom, even shorter if it's overhanging platform it will be. So I want them to be frosted for privacy of both houses. So I think the new constructions of our neighborhood should be based on mutual respect and safety. That's it. Andrew?
Sure. Also, I would like to add that-
You only have 50 seconds left?
Sure. That on the basement, that entrance would be a deaf trap for anybody who's actually using it, because vehicles do pass to and through. Anybody walking out will not have sightline visibility into it, and could be hit by a car, bicycle, pedestrian, quite easily from the entrance, which is shown there on the site plan. Additionally, there's not enough space, green space in the front yard, in order to accommodate any snow impact. We already have problems with snow being pushed away from the front yard and not properly maintained there. So by removing all this green space, it will no longer be possible to actually have snow being stored on this property.
Yeah. In conclusion, the project has a serious safety issue, legal issues, and by proposing the illegal overhanging platform, all of this property, and the privacy violation issue. That's why I've checked the project.
Vera, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for, for your input and Andrew's brief input. We'll let the agent give you some feedback. Thank you, Mr. Stambock, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem. I wonder if you could just respond to whatever you were able to decipher as to their concerns?
Absolutely. So first, I'm not sure if it's, if this is the appropriate place to discuss the kind of legal matters and threats about legal actions for the right of way. All I can say is that I've done many projects where the second story is slightly overhanging the right of way, but in this case, that second story is five meters from, from the ground of that right of way. And I can almost guarantee you that that right of way does not extend five meters in the ground. A right of way doesn't have infinite ownership of the air above it. So, but, but certainly, if it does turn out that is the case, we will not be able to proceed with that in a building permit sense, and we will take care of those kind of issues in a, in a different court, court of, I guess, court of law. But, but certainly, we're not going to build anything that is going to create any legal compromises for the homeowner. Then, just thinking briefly about the, the location of the law, of the walkout and the, and the dangers by the walkout, I find that to be mostly a matter of opinion. One key thing to note, and this actually relates to the mutual right of way, this mutual right of way is meant for cars, but there is no car going between these houses, and there's no access by cars to the backyard. So I'm not sure what they were referring to there exactly. It's, it's not being used for those purposes. But even were it to be used in the future, one key thing to note about this walkout is that it's very shallow. It's not very, it's not very deep into the ground. So to me, that mitigates a lot of those fall risks they were describing. But the other thing to consider is, this walkout is also contributing to our second unit being a really special space, because it has its own separate entrance, and we have opted to raise the main floor of our, of the main house in order to give it the ceiling space, rather than digging deeper with underpinning and creating a basement more in the ground. And then you do end up with things like very long walkouts that lead to a dark basement space, and then you could, you could extrapolate some safety concerns from that. But, but, yeah, so, what else can we talk about here? The, the other thing is, as I have uploaded the decision notice from 10 Strader Avenue in my presentation, in my supporting material uploaded on the 24th, to me, this, these two applications are very similar. I was also taking care of that application at 10 Strader Avenue, and we had no opposition to those, to those variances. And to me, some of those variances are much more impactful. So one central thing I want to just go back to here, we decided to overhang the, the second story, because the idea here was, from the beginning, to try and reduce the impact of the massing of this house. And we're not, we're not overhanging it a great amount. But this overhang has allowed us to fit the bedrooms on the second floor without, without making the back wall go as further back as, as would be allowed as-of-right.
Very reasonable application. I don't see any downside to it at all. I think the design is such that it's tried to mitigate both the length and depth and massing. So I think this is, what's as-of-right, I think, was much more substantial than what is being presented. So I think this is quite a supportable one from my perspective.
Yeah, I would just say that I, in these applications, I always take the rights of way very seriously, because even if current property owners are getting along, you know, structures are there forever, and if you're relying on a right of way, or you're infringing a right of way, it needs to be good, you know, through every future use. I, I see no impact by the overhang here to the right of way. You know, the vehicles can still get through, given the height of the overhang. So, you know, if there's a legal issue, that can be taken up through another venue, but I see no reason why that design would make this not approvable in terms of variances. It is quite a large number of variances, and so that presented a bit of a challenge to me in wrapping my head around this, but I did find the presentation materials helpful, as you said. And I think, on, on balance, the proposed form is quite similar to a form that we see throughout this neighborhood.
Thank you.
Sure, I, I agree with both of your comments, and I, I do think that, I commend the applicant for, for clearly showing the as-of-right massing, because I think that's something that, it's hard for people to get their head around, right, to see what really could be built there and what could be built there. This is a lot more restrained than, than the size of a structure that could exist. This is a lot more restrained than, than the size of a structure that could exist legally. But there, there are a lot of variances, but I think most of them are really quite small and related to the porch and, and things that don't have a meaningful impact. And I, I think that the one thing that the applicant did mention was the, the quality of the basement unit does look very good in terms of its access to light and its, and its, its point in, in the elevations of, of that, of the proposal. So I think it's very good. I'll, I'll just go ahead and move.
Please.
Approval of the application subject to Urban Forestry 1.
Thank you, Peter. Mr. Goach will be seconded. Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, Mr. Stambock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 23. Item number 23 is 49 Hounslow Heath Road. The purpose of this application, construct a new one-story ancillary building for office use and a washroom in the rear yard abutting the laneway. This current application is necessitated to seek further approval for the removal of the lawfully existing parking space on site as cited below from the previously approved minor variance decision under file number A0927/24TEY. We have before us one variance related to the cancellation or reduction of a parking space. We have before us, the committee had before it a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, five photographs of the subject property received June the 16th, 2025, covering letter from the agent received June 23rd, 2025, decision number A0927/24TEY affecting the subject property. In addition, we have four signature petition in support and by owners and occupants of properties on Hounslow Heath Road and Spring Grove Avenue received on the 16th of June, We have the agent online?
Yes, the agent's online and there are no registered speakers for this item.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. McColl.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Hi. I don't think we require a presentation. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you at all. This is a really straightforward one and I don't see any complications with it at all. We'll just take it into committee and look for a, a, a vote for you, a motion for you. Mr. Reed?
Sounds good.
Yeah, so first of all, I, I want to express my sympathy to the applicant for having to go through this again because this variance was missed. I feel like that's really, you know, a necessary burden on them. So I'm very glad, and, you know, I'm very glad to move a motion to approve. You know, this is very close to St. Clair where there's a, you know, light rapid transit. There's really no, it's perfectly possible to operate in this area without a car. There's no need for parking spot. So I'm, I'm more than happy to move a motion to approve this variance without any conditions.
Thank you. Do we have a second now?
I just have a question for...
Stephanie, come on to committee and just a quick question.
There were conditions put on the previous approval for this about making it non-habitable or not permitting habitable spaces. Is there any necessity to, to put those on this approval or does the last one just cover that off?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The last one would cover that off with the variances that were sought at that time.
Great, thanks. I will second that motion. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to approve, move by Mr. Dylan Reed, seconded by Mr. Peter Reed. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day.
Thank you. Take care.
Bye.
Certainly we can.
Yeah, I think we're at the end of this one anyway. Yes, we're at the end of this session, starting up what should have been the three o'clock, but 10 minutes?
Yeah.
Break?
Ten minutes, okay. Thank you. All good? Thank you. We resume with item number 25, which is 733 Coxwell Avenue. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing one and one-half story detached dwelling by constructing complete second and third story additions with front and rear dormers, a front basement walkout with stairs, a front porch with stairs, a rear ground floor deck with stairs, front and rear and second floor, front and rear second floor balconies and front and rear third floor decks. There will be a total of four residential dwellings on this unit. We have, the committee had before the following communication, copy of plan of survey, site plans, floor plans and elevations, four photographs of the subject property received June the 12th, 2025, a revised zoning waiver received in July 24th, 2025, and presentation materials from the agent received on July the 24th, 2025. We also have a staff report from Urban Forestry received July the 23rd, 2025. We have support letters, five support letters from owners and occupants of 700, 702, 721, 723A and 725 Coxwell Avenue received July the 24th, 2025. We have correspondence in opposition from 182 Wolverley Boulevard received on July the 18th, 2025, and we also have one from Val Walls, no address provided, July 18th, 2025, one from 178 Wolverley Boulevard and one from 735 Coxwell Avenue received July 22nd. We have further correspondence in opposition from 171 Wolverley Boulevard, 166 Wolverley Boulevard, received on July, on the 24th of July, and 165 Wolverley Boulevard received July 24th, 2025.
Through you, Chair, we have the agent online and there are opposition speakers in person as well as online as well.
Okay. Hello. Good afternoon, Mr. Brander. Mr. Brander, are you there?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Hi, good afternoon. Yes, we can perfectly. I wonder if you might provide us with your name and address for the record and then a presentation because we do have folks in opposition.
Certainly. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Adam Brander from Brander Architects. Our address is 260 Karla Avenue, Suite 202D, and I'm the agent for the proposal at 733 Coxwell Avenue in East York. One reduction to the variance list that I think was noted, I just wanted to make note of again for the public notice, variance one relating to side mall wall main height, not applicable. The corrected zoning notice was provided and is on the screen now and we, we updated the public notice to, to match as well. So there's four total variances being requested here today.
So sorry, if I may just interject, does that mean that variance one is being removed?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other changes other than variance one?
No.
Okay. So other than that, we just have four additional or four variances at the moment?
That's correct.
Thank you so much. Okay. Yeah, you have five minutes. If you don't mind a presentation?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Thanks for bringing up... Thanks for bringing up the presentation material. I'd like to walk through it with the presentation. This proposal is for an addition renovation to pseudo fourplex on Coxwell Avenue, just north of Danforth. The site shows immediate proximity to Danforth Avenue, a major street, commercial retail corridor with an abundance of local walkable neighborhood amenities. Also, a two-minute walk to TTC, even closer to the site than Danforth, is Coxwell Station providing rapid transit connection across the city, Toronto. Coxwell Avenue itself features a diverse existing building fabric, including residential, commercial, mixed-use buildings, and also institutional and civic buildings, including R. H. McGregor Elementary School, Michael Garen Hospital, and the East York Civic Center, collectively comprising the inclusive and dynamic mix of buildings. Coxwell's categorized as a major street itself, which also has zoning permissions for mid-rise infill residential projects throughout to six stories in height or 19 meters as a part of current city policy to alleviate housing shortages and provide more and expanded housing options in neighborhoods exactly like this. Next slide, please. Outlined here is the south side elevation of the proposed extent... Outlined here is the south side elevation of the proposed extent indicated with the black solid line work. Also shown here are permitted building depths and height as a point of reference for what's permitted as a right on the site. So, looking at the green outline, it shows a fairly longstanding permission for a building depth that would extend towards the back of the property about six point one meters further than what's being proposed towards the rear, and the orange outline shows the major streets permissions with, uh, extending a bit further to the rear and considerably higher as well. The proposal, we feel, takes a more sensitive and practical approach. In the green and orange, as a bright comparisons, the existing building footprint is proposed to remain unchanged from its current extent, no longer or different than what's there now. The project is for a top-up addition only, and the blue highlighted area at the front of the building only is reflective of the extent of the variance requested, so we feel it's limited in nature and minor. Also included on this slide, in the gray at the bottom, is, are the extents of the existing north neighbor building transferred from the property survey, so this shows, um, the existing, um, front extent of the building, a bit in front of the proposal, and at the rear, um, the existing neighbor extends about four meters past the rear of this proposal as well. Without perhaps this provide some context and assurance that perceived impacts from the neighbor are confined only to the side yard area and not the more coveted front and rear yard spaces. Next slide, please. The very, the applicability of the front yard setback is technical in nature. When zoning transitioned, um, from the nineteen eighty-six bylaw to the twenty thirteen bylaw, the front wall designation at the time remained the original post-war bungalow wall. It's actually two point three meters in this case beyond the existing front, uh, building enclosure in this case, and in this area, six of the seven closest neighbors share this common front enclosure and same built form condition. As mentioned in the previous slide, uh, we're not proposing anything further forward than, than what already exists, and this dash line is included to show the proposed setback consistent with the neighbors. Next slide, please. This slide unpacks, uh, setback variances number three, four, and five, which amount to a trickle-down of the transition of the, of the front wall variance, which is recessed into the building technically deemed the front wall, and different from the actual condition. So, the side setback is an existing condition, as depicted by, um, the gray area of the building and the existing building footprint, and limited to the extent of the green highlight at the front side of, of the building only, um, and for the existing two point three meters at the front. The front platform encroachment is technical due to the blue highlighted dimension from within the existing building, and the orange highlight is the actual projection from the front wall, which is conforming, um, has a dimension at less than one point five meters, as the bylaw intends, and the architectural feature, a cornice identified by the zoning examiner, has no actual projection, uh, from the building face as well. Next slide, please. This walk transit bike score is also included to reaffirm the existing local infrastructure that supports this granular density proposal. Toronto street parking confirmed for us as of July twenty-third, there are sufficient street parking spaces, uh, they're not being used in the area if required, and speaking to John, a neighbor and resident at seven twenty-three Coxwell, he mentioned that back in nineteen seventy, he was close to municipal process, and before he was born, as he noted, and he said residents were most concerned about parking then, as they are now, and that hasn't changed.
Mr. Brander, sorry to interrupt you, uh, your five minutes are up, do you want to quickly wrap up?
Yeah, I'll just wrap up.
Thank you.
And the neighbor noted that, uh, he sees the possibility for reliance on transit and local infrastructure, so he did sign a letter of support. So, with no concerns from planning, no concerns from forestry, no parking-related variances, considerable support from the neighbors in five letters of support, and the analysis included here on the context of the project and the minor variances as being minor in nature, these are my initial submissions in support of the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll go to the, uh, folks in opposition and, uh, listen to their deputations and have, uh, Mr. Brander respond subsequently, so if we can, please go to the, do we have anybody in house? Yep, oh, wonderful.
The in-person speaker at address seven three five Coxwell Avenue, can you please come up to the podium? Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. Is the light on, the red light? Okay. Good afternoon, uh, I wonder if you, are, are both of you going to speak, or?
Oh, but if the committee's okay with it, I'll just sit with her.
Yes, certainly, absolutely.
In case I couldn't understand or whatever.
I have time just to clarify.
No problem at all, we'll get you a milkshake too if you want. Uh, we need your name and your address, please.
Okay, um, my name is Susie Fong, and I'm the owner of seven thirty-five Coxwell Avenue. Can you bring up my letter of objection? Yeah, yeah, okay, uh, and I have lived in my house for thirty-one years. Since I'm the immediate neighbor of seven thirty-three Coxwell, I have major concerns regarding the proposed three-story application. Initially, there were five variances to the city zoning bylaws that are major and critical to me, and, and of which the, the height is also a, a major variance, and they present a negative impact to my property in a permanent way, daily and year-round, affecting my well-being, my health, and the enjoyment of my principal residence. And I know there has been a supporting material submitted subsequently, and the first variance regarding the height has been removed. Regardless, I would still consider that as a major variance for our residential area, which mainly consists of bungalows and two-story family homes. In my letter of objection, I've stated, um, on page two, I've stated in detail the negative impact of the variances. Basically, the proposed tall structure cast a substantial shadow on my house, and along with the variances to the front and side yard setback, including the balconies, which is in page five, um, overlooking the front and backyard are all unacceptable to me as they directly impact my privacy and enjoyment of my home. I spend a lot of time in my backyard and front porch, and these encroachments will have direct impact on my everyday living. In addition to the variances, I want to draw attention to point number six in my letter regarding the city trees, and I thought, I, I heard earlier that forestry has given their assessment, but these trees are over one hundred years old. The applicant, um, initially did not disclose these trees to the forestry for their assessment, and any potential injury to the roots of these trees could pose danger to my family, pedestrians, and cars, should it affect the integrity of the trees and cause falling branches or worse, a falling tree. Indeed, there was a fallen silver maple on our, on Wolverley, close to my house. In point number seven, which is page eight, the applicant has completely ignored the mutual laneway between the two houses. There's a gate shared by the two houses for safety reason for the past thirty-one years when I lived there, and when the gate is open, it will completely block the proposed basement entrance and the proposed walking path. The applicant has simply assumed that they can remove this gate just because the hinges are on the seven thirty-three Coxwell, and they have not discussed or consulted with me, uh, who is also the user of the gates for the past thirty-one years. Every year, both me and the previous owner of seven thirty-three Coxwell spend a lot of time killing leaves and debris in the laneway, of which there is also a large drain, which if covered by leaves would cause back sewage to both of our houses, and the proposed structure and the side yard variance encroachment into this laneway would further worsen the leaves removal and drainage problems. In point number eight, page nine, I would point out that in the original application, a garden suite is included in the joints, although the revised plan does not seek permission for the suite, it is very clear that the intent of building a garden suite exists, and I find that lack of disclosure disingenuous. Lastly, the lack of parking provisions in the proposed four-unit structure is a general concern of our neighborhood. The proposed tall structure actually will cast substantial shadow on my home, and the negative impact, as stated in, in the letter, a sunlight is crucial to my health and well-being, and also I have a vegetable garden in my backyard, and the, and gardening is not just a hobby to me, it's a central part of my well-being, my daily routine, and my lifestyle as a seventy-six-year-old retired resident, and the loss of this sunlight would severely impact my ability to use and enjoy my backyard. Especially during colder months, when I rely on moments of sunshine for warmth and comfort. In conclusion, I believe any acceptance of this city zoning bylaws variances, including the excess height variance, will do damage to my peaceful life as a resident of seven thirty-five Coxwell and at my expense. The negative impact will be direct, permanent, and felt daily and year-round. I would respectfully request that the committee refuse the application in its current form. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bear with me, let me just see if my colleagues have any questions of you? None, thank you so very much.
Through the chair, the next speaker is, um, calling in by phone. At the address, so the speaker at one seven six Wolverley Boulevard, you have been muted.
Hello, yes, my name is Val.
Could we get your full name and address, please?
Yes, are you hearing me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect, yes, full name is Val Walls, um, address is one seven six Wolverley Boulevard.
Thank you.
And, um, first of all, I just really want to, you know, acknowledge, uh, Susie's, you know, words, this is a big challenge in our neighborhood, so, very quickly, my primary...
Val, sorry, just before you begin, I was just going to say you have five minutes for the presentation, and we'll start the clock now.
Okay, very good, I won't take five minutes.
No, no problem, go ahead.
My, my primary, yeah, okay, so, so listen, my primary concern about this is, um, you know, respecting what Susie's going through, so that I, I completely support all of her comments on there, but my primary concern has to do specifically with parking. I appreciate that it was stated that there is no, you know, concern based on the city's, uh, parking allotments, however, I've done independent study on this, and given the fact that Wolverley Boulevard, between Cox, Coxwell and Woodmount, only allows for sixteen parking spots on the south side, and right now, that's the only areas that we can park our cars, and it rotates then every, you know, monthly to the north side, which has even fewer spots, and many homes here on Wolverley will have two cars per house, which does cause limitations as well. So, by putting up this unit, which is, and one could argue that, you know, there could be up to ten cars, because there could be two cars, three cars per, per household, and not, and by not having a restriction in terms of where those cars would park, um, for sure, we're going to run into a backlog. I want to emphasize that the parking spots, when we are talking about it for summer versus winter, is very different, because of the winter challenges that we have with snow removal, the, um, we often lose up to three parking spots, and so, this is going to create incredible issues with respect to the homes on Wolverley Boulevard, and right now, I have to say that, you know, it creates disputes amongst neighbors because of that parking. So, I would oppose this building if there is no parking built in within this structure itself, so therefore, the back lot, if this building was adjusted, it was lowered, but it was also adjusted so that cars could go to the back, there's ample parking that could take place in the back of that building, and to eliminate any further parking on Wolverley Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you, seeing none, thank you so very much, and we'll move on to...
Through you, Chair, the next speaker is at one eight two Wolverley Boulevard, you have been muted.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Buse Tansel, I'm the owner of one eighty-two Wolverley Boulevard.
Wonderful, thank you, uh, you've got five minutes for your presentation, starting off now.
Perfect, I wanted to start with, um, we always support growth, uh, but it needs to be thought through, so with this project, um, we, what we see is that we're going from one household to five households, um, which, as Val previously mentioned, could make the parking go up from one to two to ten, but I want to bring a different aspect here, um, as the applicant mentioned, Coxwell is a major artery, it's already under intense pressure, um, it's not just a residential street, but it's also, uh, for commercial purposes as well. At Coxwell, which is even less than two-minute walk to, uh, seven thirty-three Coxwell Avenue, there is TTC Subway, and there's also TTC Bus Stop. On top of that, it's a school zone, on top of that, that area, that street, the Coxwell Street that we're facing, is the emergency route to Michael Garen. So, extend this, dig this streets, um, adding more volume, adding more population, building more foot traffic, with, on top of the TTC Subway, the bus stop, the school zone, it's going to create not only parking concerns, but other major congestion in that area, which is a significant artery, significant road to emergency vehicles, to the Mark, Michael Garen Hospital as well. So, on top of everything that Susie and Val mentioned, um, I, I didn't need to touch upon the parking, because Val explained it really well, and I want to echo that there is a really significant conflict right now for parking, given Wolverley is the closest intersection to seven thirty-three, um, Coxwell Avenue resident, Wolverley parking is going to be used, and there's already not enough space.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, let me just see if my colleagues have any questions of you, seeing none, thank you very kindly. And then moving on to...
There are two other speakers in opposition, um, one of them being one seven three Wolverley Boulevard, however, through multiple attempts by phone call and email, um, we could not connect with them.
Thank you, we'll move on then. Is there one more after this, or that's it? That's it, oh, wonderful, thank you. Uh, Mr. Brander, are you still there?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Uh, I wonder if you might, uh, respond to some of the, uh, concerns that were expressed by the various residents surrounding, uh, your proposed site?
Yes, no problem, um, yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, I guess, like, first point is I'm fully empathetic to the, uh, adjacent neighbor at seven thirty-five, I understand, you know, change is inevitable, and if there hasn't been change for somewhere you've lived for thirty years, uh, yeah, it, it can be, uh, it can be something that, um, is either perceived or feels impactful as well, um, so, yeah, I guess that was just the first point, um, empathetic towards that, uh, if we could just bring up, I guess, like the slide two again, um, in the presentation material, um, this is where, on, on receiving the letter, I, I tried to articulate, um, the adjacent, uh, neighbor, uh, relationship, um, so those, those gray lines just showing, yeah, on the second sheet there, gray line showing the extent of, of the existing neighbor building extending beyond the proposal and in front of the proposal, um, is really just, um, emphasizing that it's a side-by-side wall relationship between the neighbors that's being maintained, there's no projection in the rear yard, and a lot of, um, the concerns about maintaining, uh, rear yard conditions for, for, for gardening and planting is all being respectfully, uh, addressed and maintained, to the best possible scenario, well... scenario, while being able to add a little bit of incremental density here. Yeah, there is no easement on the properties formally between 733 and 735, I'm sure for maintaining the removal and maintenance purposes, there's no objection to being neighborly and continuing to do that in terms of sharing the space to maintain the properties. In relation to comments from 176 Wolverley, yeah, this project is geared towards alternate transit to personal motor vehicles, it's in line with city policy, perhaps it is more attractive living accommodation that we're going to be proposing here for households that don't rely on personal motor vehicles and can make use of the very close proximity transit options, as well as biking and local amenities, so that is the intent, that's the direction of city policy, and stemming across to comments from 182 Wolverley, as they mentioned, yeah, we're looking to build more foot traffic here incrementally, a couple feet of foot traffic, and not enhancing personal vehicle use, so that's the desired intent of big city planning policy and areas that are close to these major commercial corridors or transit nodes or major streets, and it's a way of connecting the city better in these areas, and perhaps some incremental density versus more of the outskirts, so I think it's not really opposed to the development, but I think those are my initial responses, if there's anything, you know, that has a question or it was glazed over, I'm happy to answer those directly as well.
Thank you, Mr. Brander. Just a quick question for me, your drawings indicate that there are balconies, third-floor balconies, both on the front of the house and also at the rear, I take it, would that be correct?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, the front balcony is the only one that requires a variance due to the technical front wall condition, but it's also a requirement for building code in this configuration, and it's off a bedroom, so it's a low-use balcony at best.
So just a quick question for the rear balcony, would you be okay with the privacy screening on the north and south sides of 1.5 meters?
Certainly on the rear, yes.
Thank you. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you. Mr. Gosch has a question for you.
The neighbor mentioned the appearance in the plans that there might be a garden suite in the future, could you just address that, is there an intention to, in the future, consider constructing a garden suite?
Certainly, through you, Mr. Chair, there's an intention for a garden suite, in applying with the Committee of Adjustment, they advised us that it should be removed from the plans, because there's no variances related to the as-of-right garden structure, and that's why it was removed.
So the intention is to construct a garden suite, but to do it entirely within the as-of-right envelope?
Yes, that's correct, it's proposed as a shorter garden suite that is as-of-right, but has no side impact greater than a fence would on neighboring properties, in terms of the type.
Mr. Reed, Mr. Dylan Reed has a question for you.
Just a couple of questions, so first of all, the neighbor was concerned about the gate that she uses between yourself and 735, she said that like, when it's open, it would block the staircase, so there's a sort of an issue of kind of blockage there. Can you just address that concern?
Certainly, if the gate were to open the other way, or not be there, or swing inward, any of these options could address the concern.
Would you be willing to kind of build a gate for both parties that would be, you know, more convenient?
Yeah, I believe the owners are amenable to that, perhaps giving a two-door gate would be a better solution, just for the swing of a larger door.
And you'd be willing to contribute to that?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. So, next question is, you're not providing parking, and you quite rightly pointed out that it's an extremely bikeable area, the units you're providing are fairly small, would you be willing to, I know that if you're building a garden suite, you'll be building two bike parking for the garden suite, but would you be willing to build some additional bike parking in the rear for residents of the four-plex?
Yeah, I think that's perfectly reasonable and desirable as well for the...
Would you be okay if we put a condition to say, like say, adding four bike parking spots in the rear?
Yeah, provided it can be accommodated on soft landscaping, as we've seen is the case, otherwise, there's a bit of a possibility of other variances.
Right. You don't have a soft unscheduled variance in moments, do you?
No.
No, okay. So you'd be okay if we just say that, and of course, up to you to find a suitable way of doing so?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, or none? Thank you, Mr. Brander, we'll take it into committee and try and render a decision for you. The, please go ahead, Dylan.
I'm happy to start off. Honestly, this is exactly what the city is looking for in this kind of location, it's a main street, it's very close to transit, this is exactly what the city has in mind. I also want to point out, like, first of all, I can understand the neighborhood to the north is going to be impacted, but this is actually a very thoughtful proposal, it doesn't extend any further than the existing building, and so it still gives lots of space for sunlight to go into the rear, and it doesn't overlook, it doesn't actually create extra massing against the rear. Now, I'm not sure what the laneway suite will do, but that's not within our scope here. And honestly, it's a thoughtful design, it's fairly modest, it steps back into the third level, you know, it's actually, it actually is totally what's looked for. In terms of parking, this is exactly the kind of location where, you know, people can actually live without a car. It's literally around the corner from Coxwell Station, there's a lot of, there's a lot of great retail on the Danforth that provides a lot of needs, you know, if anyone can live without a car in this area, you know, this is the location for it, it's a main street. I also want to point out to the neighbors that by building a four-plex here, it actually keeps what could be a much larger development from happening, the city has just allowed much larger developments along main streets like this. Someone could be trying to, you know, accumulate several properties and build a large apartment building here, by having this four-plex in place, that will actually make it harder to do that. So in fact, in some ways, it's preventing a much more aggressive and intrusive building from going up in the area. So I think that this is an excellent proposal, it's exactly what the city is asking for, and I think it's eminently supportable.
Thank you very much for your thoughtful comments. Peter, any comments?
Yeah, but I was just going to say similarly, I guess I would say, I echo what the agent said, I thought he said it very well, that for the property to the north, there will be impacts, and it's understandable to be upset by those, because change is difficult, but I think Dylan said it, okay, I'm just repeating what's been said, yeah, I agree, I think this protects from a larger development, we saw what the as-of-right could be.
Yeah. And just to point out as well, that the height is as-of-right, so, you know, we actually have no control over making it any shorter, the impact any shorter.
Thank you, I'm in total agreement with all your comments, actually, and one of the challenges, of course, the fact that it's right on Coxwell and less than a block away from the hospital, makes the area a prime area for more intense development, all within the realm of what's allowed. I think that's about all that I have to add, if I can take it into committee and ask for a motion.
I'd be happy to make a motion, make a motion to approve these variances for the reasons I've discussed, with the condition that there be privacy screens on the rear, on the north and south side of the rear third floor balcony, forestry condition number one, and that four bike parking sites be provided, bike parking for four bikes be provided in the rear yard, and as amended.
Thank you, that's right, an amended one. Thank you, do we have a second now? Mr. Gosch, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Brander, you have your approval.
Thank you.
And we move on to item number 26, 113 Alameda Avenue. The purpose of this application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling, a four-plex, with a front porch with stairs, front ground and third-floor balconies, a rear basement walkout, rear stairs providing access to the ground-floor integrated storage, rear second and third-floor balconies, and a rear exterior staircase leading to all three levels. Also to extend the existing driveway for two parking spaces abouting the side, the north lot line, there will be four residential dwelling units on this lot, and we have, committees had before it the following communication, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, two photographs of the subject property received June the 24th, cover letter from the agent received July 22nd, and arborist report received on July the 14th, presentation materials from the agent received July 23rd, we also have staff reports from urban forestry received July 23rd, transportation services received on July the 18th, we also have urban forestry report received on July the 23rd, and we also have metro links report received on July the 22nd, we have email correspondences from the assistant planner, tree protection and plan review environment received July 28th, we also have one from community planning received July 28th, 2025, we have correspondence in support from 600 Bathurst Street, Suite 325, received July the 22nd, and we have an 11 signature petition in opposition signed by owners and occupants of properties on Cloverley Avenue and Alameda Avenue, received on July the 21st.
Through the chair, we do have the agent here in person.
Oh, wonderful.
And there are online opposition speakers as well.
Wonderful, thank you, I didn't look up fast enough to see that you were there, thank you. Just go to the next page. Thank you, we'll, all three of you sharing the five minutes, or it's going to be a time...
I will speak initially, and then Sarah, the homeowner, she will speak in the rebuttal after the...
Thank you, well, you divide up the five minutes, and you know...
Oh, it's only, pardon?
It's five minutes for the lot of you.
Even after the neighbor speak, we don't get another chance?
You'll be able to rebut.
Yes, yeah, so she'll take care of it.
But your presentation's fine.
For now, it's just me, yes.
Just you, oh, okay, wonderful. So if you don't mind, if we could have each of you give us your names and addresses, please?
Sure, okay, so my name is Paige Reisha, I am the architectural designer for this project from Bloom Inc., 222 The Esplanade, Unit 1121, Toronto, Ontario, M5A4M8.
My name is Sarah Margles, I'm the owner of 113 Alameda, I don't know, this is...
My name is Samir Rafi, I'm just here for emotional support.
Oh, emotional animals keep changing in shape, wonderful, thank you.
All right.
If you don't mind, we'll begin with your presentation, please, thank you.
Great, so good morning, committee members, as you know, my name is Paige, and we are proposing a modest three-story four-plex that fits within the existing neighborhood context. If you go to the first slide for me, please, that'd be great. First, I'd like to start with some updates from city staff, so we've consulted with urban forestry and planning staff throughout the process and have their support, which is the communication that was submitted on Monday. I briefly want to walk through all of the variances while we get started, and address some of the neighbors' concerns that were already addressed in the group letter. So the site on this first slide here is ideally located, it's showing that it's ideally located within a 10-minute walk of Englington West Station, connecting to Line 1 and the future Englington crosstown. The city's expanding housing options in neighborhoods, the E-Hon initiative supports potential intensification in areas like Oakwood Village. The four-plex, the proposed four-plex directly aligns with the E-Hon objectives and contributes toward Toronto's goal of 285,000 new units by 2031. If you could go to the next slide for me, please, and, sorry, again, that's the E-Hon bulletin, but if you go to the next slide, that'd be great. So these renderings are of the proposed design, and they show a modern architectural style. If you look closely, so one of the biggest issues that came up with the letters is that the modern look is not fitting in the neighborhood. In the renderings, I do show 111 Alameda, right next door, which has been through renovations and does look more transitional, I would say, not original. If you go to the next slide, I'll show the context of the area, so this is an aerial view of the neighboring properties. In yellow is 113 Alameda, the properties noted in orange are the opposition that have submitted the letter, and then the one in green is an example of another modern house on Alameda that's close by. If you go to the next slide, please. So here is the streetscape of Clovelly, if you look, you can see quite a few different, obviously, there's a massive tree there, but you can see different architectural styles. You have 20 Clovelly, which is more modern, I believe they were also on the letter, and then you have 18 and 16 Clovelly, which are the red brick original in the area. If you go to the next slide, please. On Alameda, there are several examples of modern, very modern takes, so we have 107 Alameda, which was noted in green on the aerial view, and then a couple others further down the street. Go to the next slide for me, please. Okay, so we are, so the existing condition, so we have, the two houses are very close together, that's 111 and 113, you can see in the survey how close they are together, they almost look like they're touching almost there, and then in the right-hand side, we have the existing eaves and then the street view. So the existing bungalow is 0.3 meters from the side lot line, and the neighbors at 111, they are 0.4 meters, and were approved of that in 2017 to build their mansion. If you go to the next slide for me, please. So this is a rendering of the proposed four-plex, and you can see it's actually further away from the house, it's actually compliant with the bylaw of 1.2 meters in relation to the shared lot line at 111, or sorry, 113 Alameda. The proposed design will have a 0.1 meter setback on the north side, which only affects the city boulevard, and we've been very mindful of that and purposeful with that decision. If you go to the next slide for me, please. This is the view from Clovelly, so you can see in red, I've kind of placed a property line there, obviously not there in real life, but that will help illustrate this, so if you go to the next slide for me. This is the corner of Clovelly and Alameda where it meets, so you see there's a tree that will remain there, but the front porch is in, sorry, not the front porch, but the stairs are encroaching onto the city boulevard. So what's important to note here is the front yard, we have five variances affecting this portion, but it's truly only because of the entrance, so the entrance is 0.91 meters from the lot line at the front, the rest of the building is 2.43 meters, and we are required to have a 2.83 meter setback, so truly, the biggest part of the variance is just that little portion of the entrance, and we are encroaching, like I said, with the stairs onto the lot line, or across the lot line. lot line. If you go to the next slide for me, please. So this is again, is just showing where the steps are crossing the boundary there. If you go back to the slide, sorry, previously, there are privacy screens. Oh, sorry, I ran out of time.
You'll have an opportunity.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have any questions at this point? None, yeah? Okay, great, thank you. We'll move on to the folks in opposition and then come back for rebuttal. Do we have anybody here in-house? No, in that case, don't move.
Hi. Can we have the speaker, online speaker at address 20 Cloverley Avenue? You have been unmuted.
Good afternoon. Is that Brian Weiss?
Yes, how are you?
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Weiss. You've got five minutes. Please go ahead and give us your version.
Thank you, committee chair and the committee members for taking the time. Again, this is another fourplex going up in a very, very single-family home-type neighborhood. We understand gentle intensification of the neighborhood, and we're all for it. We want more people moving to the neighborhood. But this is, you know, a massive home. We're talking about four units, maybe 16, 20 people living in one home. And the tree, the tree is a beautiful black walnut that will have to be injured by the construction of this property, and we're concerned about its well-being, not just for the tree, but also for the animals that eat its fruit, like squirrels and raccoons and all sorts of other animals that might be searching for other ways to get their food coming into our homes. So I'm just concerned mainly about the size of this property and what it does to this neighborhood. Are we overstepping a little bit here with all the variances? That's, I'll leave that up to you guys. You guys are the ones that make the decisions. So, you know, you come, you make a decision based on what you hear today, you have a letter, you see all the points of objection, and I'll leave it up to you guys to make that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Can we move on to the next person?
The online speaker at 111 Alameda Avenue. You have been unmuted.
Hello, good afternoon. Is that Hong Sen Ju?
My name is Hong Sen Ju. I was the owner, the homeowner of 111 Alameda. So I noticed at the backyard, so that staircase is very, very tall, so they can, they can block, they can see my backyard very clearly. So I don't like that they could, some people to peer down at my backyard, because I always stay at backyard. So that's my main concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's it? Oh, wonderful. Okay, thank you. We have a need for rebuttal.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. As I said, my name is Sarah Margles. I'm the owner of 113 Alameda, which I co-own with my spouse and my sister. I'm pleased to just take a few minutes to share our vision for this project and some of the thoughts we've put into the design and address the comments that we've just heard. This is very new for me. I've never done anything like this before, so forgive my nervousness and newness to this process. I am a public servant by occupation, and one reason I chose that as a profession is because I fundamentally believe in doing public good and using my resources to support society. I see this project as an extension of that commitment. While we are hoping to earn some profit from this venture, as was noted in the letter of opposition, the personal goal is long-term security, not short-term profit, and along the way, hoping to do a lot of good for much-needed housing in the city. When we researched what's needed, balanced with what makes sense for our family, it became clear that there is a need for three-bedroom units that are close to transit and commercial areas, that are in good condition and good neighbors with mixed rents. We are striving to do that with this property. Paige mentioned a 10-minute walk to Eglington West. It's also a two-minute walk from the Oakwood Eglington crosstown and about 30 seconds from Oakwood. In our financial planning, one of the units we are planning to use philanthropically, and there's a support letter for that that's been submitted. We're in discussions with JIAS, which is an immigrant aid society, where we are hoping to, our plan is to offer significantly reduced or no rent. We're also aiming to work with JIAS to rent at least one of the units to other new Canadians who can afford market rent but face other barriers to housing, such as not having any credit history in Canada. The others will rent at market rate. In terms of the design features and to address some of the comments, the variances that we have applied for are only on the city side, not where there are immediate neighbors, and we've done that to be as respectful and thoughtful as we can to the neighbors and to their privacy. We have privacy screens on front and back balconies. We took care, quite a lot of care, to think about the fire exit stairs, which I understand the concern about privacy, but those really are designed as emergency fire exit stairs only, not as an entrance, not as a regular entrance, and so the tenants shouldn't be using those with regularity. The neighborhood has a lot of architectural styles, as was noted. I do want to comment about the tree. There are two trees on the property. We have no intention of destroying our, we will need to injure the trees, but we are working collaboratively with urban forestry on that. The reason we've proposed the site kind of as westward as makes sense is to maximize the green space in the backyard for the tenants. If urban forestry says we need to move the whole, the whole building eastward, we will do so. Whatever urban forestry says, we are committed to keeping the trees alive and well and thriving for the tree and for the animals. Also, just in terms of parking, as was noted in the letter of objection, there is one parking spot on the property right now. We are proposing to put a second. So there is a garage that would be destroyed, and we'll, I understand we have to work with the city on the transportation side to figure those out, but we're trying to accommodate some amount of parking, even though it's also very, very close to a number of transit aims. And also just to say that we are hoping to make the building as environmentally positive as possible. One of the reasons we chose a flat roof is to hopefully be able to put in a green roof or at least put in some solar panels, so there's quite a lot of green space anyway. We're also looking into a number of different just environmental materials in building. And lastly, just to say that I did try twice to knock on doors of neighbors. I was able to speak with the neighbor at the back at 15 Clovelly, and they had no objections to us. I did leave my contact information with the tenants at 111 Alameda and asked that they give my contact information to the owner, and we just didn't hear from them, although they did sign onto the letter of objection and spoke here today. And just to say, we are flexible and happy to work collaboratively with the neighbors, but also really want to do well by the city and bring in some much-needed housing in as good a way as we can. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. First of all, if I may use my role here and just say, thank you very much for the renderings. They were excellent. I do want to comment on the, the design features makes it a most interesting structure. I mean, basically, it's four walls and a roof, but the external features makes it all the more interesting. The one question I'm just going to pose to you, and you don't have to, I suppose, entertain that feature, but your neighbor immediately next door, which is at 111, I believe, concerns, only concern was privacy, and he's looking at the stairwell at the back, the fire exit track, and I notice you've got privacy screens facing the street. But for him, of course, he's next door, and I know people aren't going to be sitting on those smaller landings, but is it possible to put some kind of screening as people come down the stairs so they're not actually looking?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's something to consider.
Yeah, we'd be happy to put, we had, we've had conversations about a privacy screen on that third floor back balcony. We hadn't put it because of the fire stairs, but we're happy to add it. That's not a problem at all.
And I think maybe on the, on the third level and the second level.
The second already has it.
Oh, it's already? So, you know, I think that will alleviate concerns.
The landing, just the landing part, so yes, yeah.
On the landing portions.
I see, okay.
Let me see if my colleagues have any questions. It's, by the way, a very commendable approach to being a landlord, a land person. Thank you. Mr. Gosh?
The, so you spoke to it a little bit, but the two parking spaces that you're intending to put in, transportation often doesn't approve new parking pads. It's something they don't like to do. And in fact, there's a condition that we would impose as part of an approval to remove the curb cut, which jeopardizes the two parking spots that you have in your plans. So I'm assuming this has been a consideration. You still want to move forward despite the fact that we're likely to impose that condition?
Just to clarify, there is an existing driveway there?
Yes.
And that spot would remain as-is? But the extent, like expand, like widening it would be a problem?
No, no. Transportation is asking that spot to be removed. Usually driveway is only permitted when it leads to a garage. You know, I'm not a zoning examiner, so I'm just explaining based on what I've seen from past applications. But transportation's condition that they're asking us to impose is that your curb, existing curb cut for the existing driveway be removed, since you're removing the garage, and the garage is the thing that gives you permission for the driveway, which is, which is being used for parking.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I hadn't understood.
I don't see any transportation report on our application, so I'm guessing that wasn't submitted publicly, and that was submitted.
It should be in, in the files online.
I don't see it here.
It's dated July the 23rd?
I see Metrolinks.
No.
I see planning, and I see forestry. I don't see.
It's the one that's up on the screen if you would like to read it in that manner.
I will say, transportation seems to leave open the possibility that you could apply for one parking spot, but they're fairly clear that they would not approve two.
Okay.
If I remember correctly.
Yeah, there is nothing on, on looking at the application file online. I don't see it, but if we can still at least apply for one, you're okay with this?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're happy to take the conditions on parking and then work it out with.
Okay, it says.
As needed, that's.
For one parking space to be permitted, an application approval is required through transportation.
Could staff scroll down to the portion that?
So I think that we're in an area where they do approve those, but you'd have to apply for it.
Okay, no problem.
There's no guarantee that you'd be accepted. What I would suggest would be that if we, if we approve this condition, we say unless transportation services approves one parking spot or something like that.
Well, transportation can always waive their condition without requiring it to be fulfilled, so.
Is that true, Sabrina, if we, transportation can waive the condition?
Yes.
Okay, so in that case, yeah.
And then my, my second question for you, or this is more for the designer, so there's a number of commendable features that have been discussed, and one that's considered is putting on solar panels. If you go that route, would that trigger a height variance that's not before us, or do you believe you've got enough height to explore that possibility or just uncertain yet?
Yeah, so we're at 10.98, I believe, if I recall, and we have 11 meters, so there's very little wig of room, but there is a variant, or sorry, a zoning provision that does allow for like an, like an extension just for things like solar panels or anything mechanical. And I think that would fall under that. We'd obviously have to be mindful. I think it's only like 12 inches or it's, it's, it's something small. So if we were to go that route, we would have to reconsider, obviously, with the height, because we don't want to go back through committee, so.
Yeah, I just would hate for you to have to come back.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. Peter, any thoughts? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Perhaps we can take it into committee and look for more.
Yeah, so I would be happy to move this. I think it's, it's highly desirable in that location to have a fourplex, and it's a good spot to add housing options. You know, there's not going to be a condition holding this applicant to provide a unit rent-free and provide another unit to a deserving tenant with other barriers, but I trust that they are intending to do that. Regardless of that, it's approvable, but I think it's commendable, and I think the design is quite attractive, even though we don't judge our variances on design. So I'm quite happy to move to approve this, subject to a condition that privacy, privacy screening be added to the south side platforms, leading to the stairwell, and subject to the transportation condition. And was there forestry as well?
Advisory.
Okay, it's advisory only, so just subject to those two conditions.
Second, thank you, Peter. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval. And just before.
Thank you very much.
I must, I must just indicate that when I look, look at the front of the property, it reminds me of a Mediterranean setting, and it's apt because it's on Alameda, which is Portuguese, so interesting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care. item number 2737 Blackthorn Avenue. To, purpose of the application, to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a partial rear third-story addition and a front third-story rooftop deck, pardon me, above the second-story portion of the dwelling. Committee had before it the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevation, seven photographs of trees in the subject property received June the 13th, covering letter from the agent received June the 20th, 2025, decision numbers A0745/204TY and A0214/17EYK affecting the subject property. We also have an advisory report from Metrolinks received July 22nd, 2025, and we have correspondence in opposition from 37 Blackthorn Avenue and 49 Blackthorn Avenue, both received July 24th.
The Chair, we do have the agent online, and there are no other registered speakers for this item?
Thank you. Is this Igor Cock? Are you there?
It's actually Bruno.
Oh, sorry.
He's on a meeting, and it's old Bruno coming from Ancel Engineering Associates located at 1649 St. Clair Avenue West.
Thank you very much. We don't have anybody in opposition present, or I think we just had correspondence. Do we have any speakers in opposition? None. In that case, we may or may not require a presentation. Mr. Reed has a question for you.
Thanks, Chair. I remember this file when it came last, last year, and I'm just wondering what's changed since that approval. I see you're just going for this one variance. Can you explain what the difference is between then and now?
Absolutely. Through you, Mr. Chair, yes. I recall that Mr. Dillon and Mr. Peter were part of this application. I did it myself. So we actually have an issue building permit, and when we start to do our demolition and the inspection about what we have on the roof, we actually have a bit of a challenge there. So we have a situation where we have to try to do a small adjustment. So technically, what we had was like sort of, let's call it an inverted Z on the roof. There was a little bit of a slanted, so now what we're trying to do, we square it off so we can transfer all the load from the roof to the outer walls, and we don't put any loads on the inside. So technically, we're going to cover whatever or enclose what was covered before. So very, very tiny minor change, but it's do mostly because of structural issues and with contractors and pricing materials, and so it would be a big challenge. So we present an alternative to the owners. They were receptive about it. It's a very simple minor, minor change, and that's basically about it.
Okay, excellent. Thanks.
Last time, we, we applied a condition about privacy screening. You okay if we apply the same condition again?
Oh, absolutely. We presented, if you see the drawings, we actually have that 1.5 meter screened. We have it in wood or despite it as wood. Maybe we might do it in glass, but the glass will be, of course, is going to be glazed. So it's, in terms of building code, we comply, and in terms of zoning. So it's, in terms of building code, we comply and in terms of zoning, yes, we're gonna do it opaque. If we're gonna do it wood or glass, for now we have it wood, but we might have an alternate to do it fully glass, but it will be opaque on that section.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No. As far as I know, I think we just have a single variance, there are no conditions at all. So we'll move it into committee and look for a motion? Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Chair.
Peter Reed moves motion to?
Yeah, I'll move a motion to approve this application. It's, it's very minorly different than the last time it was approved and I, I think that the only variance here is a small increase in GFA for structural issues, as we heard. And I think it's important that we do add the privacy screening condition just to make sure because of the, the odd lauding pattern here. So that would be privacy screening on the north and south sides of the building to 1.5 meters.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Dillon, Reed, thank you. Second, all those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to item number 28. Item number 28 is 60 Hillcrest Drive. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing two and one-half story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition, a front staircase, new front walkways, side, side west and rear basement additions, below grade garage extension and storage and a rear third-story terrace platform. Pardon me. Committee had before it, copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a revised site plan, floor plans and elevations, received July 18th, 2025. Three photographs of trees on the subject property received June the 17th, 2025. Covering letter from the agent received June the 13th, 2025. Agents' email correspondence received on July 15th, 2025. Site-specific zoning bylaw 4742023 affecting the subject property. Presentation materials from the agent received July 28th, 2025. We also have staff report from Urban Forestry received July the 23rd, 2025. We have correspondence in support from 43 Hillcrest Drive received July 10th and correspondence in support from 56 Hillcrest Drive and 66 Hillcrest Drive.
The RE chair, do you have the agent here in person and there are no other speakers?
Pardon me. Good afternoon. Thank you. Did we not have you earlier as well?
Yes, this is my, my second file of the day.
Mr. Van De Bees, nice to have you here. Thank you for being here. We don't have anybody in opposition online neither here in person, so perhaps let me ask my colleagues, any need for presentation? None? Questions? None? Oh, it's a good day.
Bruno Way, I'll take it.
Bruno. So I'll take it and ask for a motion on this particular item. Anybody with a motion? Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for the, I think the package is, is very good. It shows the, the rooftop garden well and I think the impacts of that with, to the neighbors and how, how those are limited. There are only a few variances that are required for this and, and I think that's completely reasonable. The size of the, the platform was a slight concern given the proximity to the neighbor, but I, I think that it's, it's adequately screened. And then the other variances I, I find completely minor. So I'm happy to move approval, subject to Urban Forestry Condition 2.
Thank you. Do we have a second now? Mr. Gosch, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Peter Reed moved to approve, seconded by Mr. Gosch. All those in favor? Thank you. Oh, we forgot. Forestry number two condition. Thank you.
He said that.
Oh, he said that. Sorry. Thank you very much. You have your approval, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item number 29 was postponed, so we move on to item 13.
I'll recuse myself, Mr. Chair.
Oh, this is the one. All right, thank you so kindly. Don't go too further. Thank you. Item number 30 is, item number 30 is 34 Roxborough Street West. First purpose of this application is to alter the existing one-story ancillary building, three-car detached garage in the rear, rear yard abutting the laneway by constructing a partial second-story addition for the purpose of one laneway suite. There will be a total of two residential units on the, the slot, one unit within the main dwelling and one unit within the ancillary building. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, four photographs of the subject property received June the 25th, 2025. Decision number A1382/22TEY affecting the subject property. Arborist report received June 16th, 2025. Presentation materials received from the agent on July 23rd, 2025. We also have email correspondence from Heritage Preservation Services received July the 16th, 2025. And we have correspondence in opposition from 49 MacPherson Avenue, 45 MacPherson Avenue and correspondence in opposition from 51 MacPherson received on July the 28th.
The RE chair, we do have the agent here in person and the online opposition speakers. Yeah, online.
Thank you. Bear with me one second. Item number 30. Flip the page. Thank you. Mr. Manius, thank you. Welcome. Could you get your name and address, please? And we, I think, did you say that we have the folks in opposition online? Wonderful. We'll need a presentation. Thank you.
My name is Manius, I'm the agent. Number one, Teakwood Grove, M3B2H9 Toronto. And if staff can be, thank you, you beat me to it. So that, that's gonna be very helpful, this first slide. So in front of you, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, we have an application for a second-floor laneway suite above the existing detached garage. We are requesting two variances. First variance is sort of technically natured, the landscape requirement of 79.5 versus required 85%. This is an existing condition, as you can tell from the site plan above, there is no proposed work between the back wall of the existing dwelling to the back, to the opposite wall of the, facing the garage. This is all existing condition and whether there's a laneway suite or not, it will remain as is. Second variance being the building width for the laneway, for some odd reason, when the bylaw was written, it defined the parameters of what a laneway can be, so it says eight meter wide by 10 meter deep instead of specifying the size of the laneway suite. So we request, because of the existing condition of the garage that we have, we're proposing 6.7 meter depth instead of the allowable eight meter and then we're rotating it around so the width is 9.98. The heavy bolt line that you see on that site plan is the as-of-right laneway suite that can be built on the property, which is eight meters wide by 10 meter deep. The size of the laneway suite proposed is 65 square meter. The as-of-right is 80 square meters, so we're 23% less smaller than what it can be. I've had a chance to go over the letters of opposition from the neighbors and I'm just gonna skim through quickly a few comments and I'm sure you're gonna be hearing from them yourself. I think there's a bit of disinformation in these letters. First of all, there's, there's a mention of phased approach. So when we applied back in the fall of 2022 for the house and the garage, laneway suites were not permitted in the MacPherson-Roxborough area. The actual proposal was actually to make the house smaller and to make the existing garage smaller. So the original house was 412, the FSI was 412 square meters, we brought it down to 400 and the garage was 80 and we brought it down to 79. The reason, and we also made the house from 20 meter deep to 16.8 meter deep. So by all means, the house got shrunk and the garage, we sort of tilted it a bit because it was sitting skewed on the lot and that was the reason for demolishing it. There's also a mention about removing the tree, a Manitoba maple, which was there originally at the corner, growing at the corner of the old garage. The reason the tree was taken out was because of its condition and if staff can be, appreciate if you can go to page 17 of the proposal of the presentation. Attached to it is the arborist report that was submitted back in the time and I quote from it on the second paragraph, it says, "This tree would be a good candidate for removal based on defects." I'll give you, so it's right at the, it's actually part of the presentation material, not the arborist report that was submitted as part of this application. So as you go through them, well, keep scrolling and, so that's the tree, if you don't, that's in question, and that's the old garage, just the screen before that, please. So you can see the tree there, it was in very bad condition and the worry was a, at any storm, it will actually fail. So that's the reason why it had to be removed and forestry was supportive of the removal of it. It wasn't because of the intent of building a laneway suite down the road. There's also a mention of that, there was always an intention of building a laneway suite and that's why the garage is incomplete. The garage is actually complete and there's pictures that we submitted of that. The only thing missing is just the flashing and decouping of the wall. The garage is being used, windows and doors have been installed and there's also radiant heating in it. Last but not least is the privacy overlook. So when we designed this laneway suite from day one, the intent was not to have any living area windows facing north towards the neighbors. So the only window we have facing northward is a bedroom window, which would require privacy screening for the benefit of the, of the owners or the tenant of that laneway suite. The living area windows are all facing south towards the house. Additionally, there's 20 meter spatial separation between the proposed laneway suite and the back walls of the neighbors on MacPherson who are objecting to this proposal. And last but not least, there's a flat roof, because we're not building the full width of the garage, there's actually a flat roof area, which we're permitted to have a second-floor terrace covered on it and we're not proposing to do anything there. There's actually a blank wall, so not even, somebody can jump out of the window to make use of it. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very kindly. We will hold, Mr. Reed has a question.
So you said the, the bedroom window facing north is gonna, do you have like, are you, do you plan to frost it or something like that or what, what do you plan to do?
That's not the intent. It's, because it's a bedroom window, it's the benefit of the people in that room, we want to have blinds in it, no different than the neighbors across the road on MacPherson. So that's the, but, so that's why we didn't put a living area where you typically wouldn't have blinds. We, we kept the living, all the living areas facing south.
Right.
So the only window we have is the bedroom window.
So you're just counting on the, the resident to not want to have that?
No different than the neighbors. I don't think there's expectation to have a chauvinist there to have the windows open while they sleep at night.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? We'll go to the folks in opposition. They're both online?
They're online, so the, the online speaker at address 51 MacPherson Avenue, you have been muted.
Thank you.
Yes, Jonathan Lancaster.
Sorry, is this Jonathan Lancaster?
Yes, 51 MacPherson Avenue.
Hi, good afternoon.
So just a few things on the submissions. We don't have the architectural drawings, but it's likely no surprise that the, the building was built so that it could support a second-floor structure on it, so we don't necessarily accept the submission that this is just happenstance, that the building was built in such way. There's a doorway that goes in on either end, which would allow a staircase, which is what they proposed to put in there. In any event, that's just, leads into the submission really, that we'd urge on the committee to look at the cumulative effect of the changes on this property and just not what is being asked for now. There's a larger house and now there's the, the proposed laneway suite. The other thing that you didn't hear a submission on is the character of the neighborhood. And that is really the neighborhood, my submission consists of the Roxborough West Street and the MacPherson Street. And if you look at the attachment to the public hearing notice, it does set out the character of the neighborhood in terms of the evenness of the frontage of the houses across Roxborough. And if you, if this extended further, you'd see that on the other side, in terms of the frontages, and I'll get to the rear lots in a moment, the frontages are also evenly dispersed. So these are even on either side, as are the back. And I'll focus on the back lots, the rear lots now of MacPherson and Roxborough, those are also even. So that's the character of the neighborhood and that, in my submission, is something to be taken into account when looking at this. So in my respectful submission, the, the written submission of 49 MacPherson is excellent, lays out the points. Proceeding on the basis, the committee has read those and I know I'm limited to five minutes, but to, to summarize, you've got to look at the cumulative effect and the fabric or character of the neighborhood and it was private. And that was one of the characteristics of the neighborhood and now we're hearing that there's not gonna be frosted glass. And so what the difference is, and I'll just sum it up now, is the character of the neighborhood was you had to look across two rear lots to see in the back of the window of the other one. You're now looking across the laneway and just one of the rear lots. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very kindly. And we have the next person?
The next speaker at address 49 MacPherson Avenue, you have been muted.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Di Shapala and I live at 49 MacPherson Avenue.
Thank you. Good afternoon. And you've got five minutes to do a presentation, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Mr. and all the committee members. As stated, my name is Lisa Di Shapala. My husband, children and I live at 49 MacPherson Avenue, directly north of the subject property. We've submitted a detailed letter supporting the city's goals for gentle intensification while outlining our objections to this application. I'll focus today on concerns relating to safety, overdevelopment, privacy and the integrity of the planning process. The laneway was never designed for residential use. It is not maintained and lacks sidewalks. Increased occupancy in such a tight space creates real safety risks, especially for children, seniors and pedestrians. Emergency vehicles cannot reliably access the laneway, nor is there access to fire hydrants in the event of a fire. The restricted layout raises serious concerns about delayed response times and fire risks to neighboring homes. This is a public safety hazard. Additionally, there will be cumulative impacts from the previous awarded variances on stormwater drainage and it must be addressed. The laneway lacks stormwater infrastructure with no catch basins, no drainage systems. With the previously approved oversized garage and reduced landscaping now proposed, the property has effectively exceeded reasonable maximum lot coverage, leaving little permeable surfaces. Without proper mitigation, runoff is likely to pool in the laneway or migrate to neighboring properties, including ours, raising the risk of flooding and erosion. This is a direct result of overbuilding and should not be passed on to the neighbors. While the laneway suites are permitted in principle, this application is not as-of-right. It seeks multiple variances, including for landscaping coverage, and must therefore meet the four tests of the minor variance. In our view, it fails. In 2023, the property received substantial relief per file A1382-22TEY, including increased floor space index, lot coverage and oversized garage. The garage remains unfinished and is now being converted into a two-story dwelling. This suggests a phased approach and was not disclosed initially. Stacking new variances onto prior ones undermines a zoning framework and pushes well beyond what can be considered minor. The cumulative impact alters the character and use of the lot. The proposal disregards the purpose of zoning controls around density and it does not respect the official plan requirements to reinforce neighborhood character. We're also concerned about privacy and shadow impact. The two-story structure introduces direct views into our yard and home. Being north of the site will also experience increased shadowing, especially in the winter, further limiting sunlight and enjoyment of the property. Lastly, the process- Lastly, the process itself raises serious concerns. We and other neighbors participated in 2023 application in good faith. What's now before the committee appears to be a calculated phased approach to avoid full transparency and scrutiny. When an industry professional uses procedural fragmentation to gain incremental approvals, it erodes public trust and sets a dangerous precedent for future applications. This isn't about opposing housing. It's about ensuring it's done responsibly, and when the process is manipulated, credibility is lost. If the committee is inclined to approve the application, we ask that our safety concerns be addressed. We also request that windows facing our property be obscured and that the applicant be required to include second-story setbacks on the north side to reduce the overall height and mitigate shadow impact. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very kindly. Anybody else? So that's it?
Through the chair, there is one more speaker. However, through multiple attempts by phone and by email, I was not able to connect.
No problem. Thank you very much. Ms. Manius, if you don't mind responding to the questions and concerns.
Well, the disinformation continues. I think I've made it clear, the original, the original application that was submitted for the house and the garage is actually undersized what was originally there. Without sounding like a broken record, the original house FSI was 412 square meters. We brought it down to 400. So we went from 68. something percent to 67%. Same thing with the garage, we went from 80 to 79 square meters. So by both tokens, there is no overdevelopment. The application was oddly enough to make it smaller. At the time, we tried to argue with city planning, with zoning, that we should actually not be at committee for adjustment because we're improving an existing condition. The only reason we had to come to committee was for the fact that we proposed a side addition, and we could not use the 69% rule when you're doing an addition to an existing building. And they didn't care about the fact that we were chopping off over three meter of the back of the house and moving it to the side and making the house smaller. So there is no overdevelopment. If anything, it's been made smaller. Same thing with the footprint of the building. There is more landscaping as it stands today between the old house and the new house, because both of them have been made smaller. So I've tried to explain this, but it seems like the neighbors just keeps repeating the same thing over and over again. There is no phased approach. As I had mentioned, when we submitted the application in the fall of 2022, laneway suites were not permitted on the McPherson Roxborough zone area. If the plan was to do this down the road, we would have made the footprint of the garage to accommodate the eight by 10 as of right. And even today, like, I don't want to be facetious, but if staff can bring the presentation material, the first page, we showed what the as of right footprint can be. So with some structured gymnastics, we can cantilever this thing, make it 23% bigger, and have second floor terraces on both sides if we wish, or we can slide it up and down. None of this was done. So I don't think it's to the benefit of the neighbors for us to build as of right. By doing it this way, we're actually making it smaller, and we're addressing the privacy issues. I just asked, while the neighbors were speaking, I just asked my client, the owners here, about privacy. Like, it's not typical that you would see obscure glass in a bedroom. You see it in a bathroom, a stair hall, something like that. But just in, to address the concern, we're willing for the, if the committee sees it fit to approve this application, is to put a condition that the bottom 1.5 meter of the window would be obscure glass or frosted, like obscure glass. And I think that basically anybody standing inside the room wouldn't be able to look out, although the neighbors will have the benefit of looking down and into, through the clear glass, because they are taller up, they're three-story buildings on the neighbor's side. The landscape, again, I'll just bring that up again, it is an existing condition. Whether the committee approves or disapproves this application, it's not going to change. And it's actually improvement to what was there before this house was renovated. Regarding the hydrants and what have you, the actually, the way, it's not the bio, it's actually the building code, when it was looked at for laneway suites, you're not allowed to have fire services or emergency services use the laneway. We actually had another project which was canceled because we couldn't provide the access from the front of the street. Right now, we have a 1.2 meter setback from the side of the house, which is the, actually the required setback is 0.9 meters for fire services to be able to access the laneway suite. They're not supposed to be coming in from the laneway at the back. That's, that's the building code requirement, and we do meet that requirement because of the increased setback on the side of the house. Character of the neighborhood, I'm, I didn't know what to say about that, because the garage at the back lines up with what's there, the other garages on the street. The house at the front is the exist, it's actually a heritage home. We did not touch the front part of the house. We put an addition at the side, and we intentionally set it back, if I recall, about 15 to 18 feet, so it doesn't compete with the heritage front elevation. So we did everything by the book and made the house smaller.
Thank you very much. Let me see, Mr. Reed, you have got a question?
Just to confirm, the new garage is basically the same size as the garage that was there before, is that correct?
It's actually smaller.
Yeah, slightly smaller.
Yeah, it was just, it was sitting obscured in the lot, so what we did is we rotated it, made it more rectangular.
So there's always been a garage of roughly this size?
Oh yeah, so if, if.
No, that's fine, I saw the pictures.
Yeah, there's pictures.
I'm just confirming that that's the case.
Yeah, it was a four-car garage.
Thank you.
And the existing garage is four-car. We did not plan for this, so the end bay.
That's fine.
Okay.
I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manius. I'll take it into committee now and deliberate. Thank you. Any comments or observations?
I think this is a great proposal, actually. I think that, yeah, I think the agent did a good job expressing that this is a lot smaller than it could be if he went in as of right form, and I think it's actually more desirable for the neighbors on either side to have it pushed further towards the back and in a kind of linear, a horizontal arrangement. 5% on the soft landscaping, I think, is a minor variance, and the width of an extra two meters, especially because it's really stepped back on one side, I don't see that being, having a major impact. In terms of the bedroom window, I don't, I don't think, I don't feel comfortable putting a condition on that, because the house is, the house to the north is very far away, and there's going to be zero shadowing on that as well, because you have to cross the lane, cross the garage, and then, and then you're there. So I fully support this application.
Thanks.
I mostly agree. I think it's actually a really good use of the existing condition. I really don't see it as having a strong impact. I would say that I would support putting the frosting that was offered, simply in order, first of all, I don't think it's going to have a negative impact on, on the user of the laneway suite, and I think it helps to alleviate the concerns of the neighbors whether or not, you know, we really think it's that significant. I think it's nice to be able to accept that gesture from the owners, and gesture of goodwill, basically. So I would, I would want to add that as a condition. But yeah, otherwise, I think this is a very reasonable thing. It makes good use of an existing condition, which is a large, wide garage, really doesn't have a lot of impact. It's a nice long way from the main house. Yeah, it's, it's a good contribution to providing some, some extra living space in the, in the area, so.
If I may just add, I think one of the challenges perhaps, and misunderstandings, comes from perhaps the application that was in 2023, I think March 2023 or thereabouts, and there were some variances related, pardon me, to the garage at the time. And laneway suites were not a done thing at the time. So I think perhaps in, the suspicions kick in, thinking, oh, this was planned. I don't believe it was, and I do think, I agree with both of you, that the proposal is an excellent one.
Yeah.
Very supportable. And with regard to the frosted bottom, if it's my bedroom, I'd have my curtains closed anyway. I really don't have a concern, but if whoever moves a motion, puts it in, and the agent has agreed that they would do something like that, so I look forward to a motion.
I'll make a question. You care more about it than I do, so yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve these variances, with the condition that the north-facing window in the bedroom be frosted to a height of 1.5 meters.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed, and all those in favor. Thank you. You have your approval, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members.
Worried you in council. Welcome back. And we move on to item number 31, which, sorry, item number 31, which is number 32, Salisbury Avenue. The purpose of the application is to order the, to alter the existing three-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear third-story addition and closing a portion of the existing terrace. Committee had before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, three photographs of the subject property and trees, received June the 23rd. We have before us one variance.
Through the chair, we have the agent online, and there is one interested speaker as well, also online.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Good afternoon. Is that Sam? Hello, good afternoon.
Property address 4789 Younger Street.
Thank you. We have one person in interest. I'm not sure whether we need, we might need a quick presentation, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Do we want to just unmute that person and find out if they just have a question?
Good point, yeah. Mr. Rusty, can you just hold on while we check with the person in interest, whether they're supporting or opposing, or whatever it is they plan to do?
Through the speaker.
Can you hear me? This is Suresh.
Hi, Suresh, good afternoon. We've got you down as somebody in interest. Are you opposing the application?
Well, I am the neighbor of 32 Salisbury.
Great.
I own 34 Salisbury Avenue. I just have a couple of questions. This is something very new to me, so I just have a couple of questions to ask, and we can go from there.
I suppose we could entertain you and go ahead with your questions and have the agent respond with, to your questions. You've got five minutes.
Yes. Could you clarify whether the proposed third-floor massing is aligned with or recessed from or projects beyond the existing third story of the adjoining semi-detached dwelling? And what rationale supports the desired choice is my first question. And my next one would be, are any of the proposed new windows oriented in a manner that would result in direct overlook into the rear or side windows of 34 Salisbury Avenue, which is mine, potentially impacting the privacy of adjacent residents? And my third question would be, does the proposed third-floor addition maintain the architectural consistency and visual harmony of the semi-detached dwellings at 32 and 34 Salisbury Avenue? Given the semi-detached nature of the buildings, has carefully, has careful attention been paid to ensuring the additional, does not, addition does not disrupt the existing architectural symmetry between the two units? And then, as far as the tree, there is a tree on the rear yard. From an urban forestry and site planning standpoint, what protection measures are proposed for the existing Norway maple tree? It's approximately 1.2 meters in diameter, located in the rear yard during the construction process, of course. Has a review been conducted by urban forestry to evaluate the potential impact of excavation and construction on the root system of mature trees, particularly those located on or near the shared property boundaries? And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. We'll get the agent to provide some responses, hopefully, to your questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. So basically, what we are trying to achieve here is to make our property matching our neighbor property, which is 34 Salisbury. So in terms of height, mass of third floor, amount of extension that we have to the back, what we're trying to do is to match what 34 Salisbury has. So we went to the side, we measured the existing site condition, we measured the existing 34 Salisbury extension that has been done back in 2013. And what we are proposing to do is to match our rear wall addition at the third floor to be at the same location as 34 Salisbury. With regards to window, we are proposing three windows, like, two windows and one door for the rear side. One of the windows is going to be in the bathroom, one of the windows is going to be in the bedroom facing the backyard, and one is the door to the existing balcony on the third floor. Obviously, we're going to have 1.5 meter guard, matching as the neighbor property with regards to our thruss, which is existing, and we are going to maintain that. With regards to the existing tree in the backyard, again, what we are doing here is renovation on the third floor. So yes, we understand that the existing tree is within the protected area for urban forestry. For that reason, we are planning to hire an arborist and make sure the branches that might be affected by our renovation are clearly protected. So an arborist report will be submitted to the, to the city for review before we get the building permit application. I'm not sure if I covered all questions. There was a tree question, there was a window question, and there was a mass that if it's going to match the third floor of the existing neighbor.
I think you've, you have. Okay. Thank you. Let me just see if any of my colleagues have any questions for you. None at all? Okay, thank you. We'll take it into committee and come up with a response to the application. It's a fairly straightforward application. Forestry hasn't responded, so there's no comment from forestry. If there was, they would probably be there. We only have a single variance related to FSI, and that's about it. Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, this is a very straightforward application, and I think the agent did a good job at explaining that he's just matching what is existing at the neighbor who called in. To have the same third floor condition with a slightly larger room and then with a walkout. So there's only the one variance related to FSI, and I think there's no negative impacts of this, it's just, it's completely mirroring what's there. So I'm happy to move approval without condition.
Thank you kindly. Second. Mr. Goris, thank you very much. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We have a five-minute break.
Yes, five-minute break, please. Thank you.
Okay, members, please turn on your videos, microphones.
Okay, and we return. We now move to item number thirty-two, which is three one five Arlington Avenue. Purpose of the application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling. Basement level is considered the first story, with an integral garage, partially covered front porch with stairs, a rear second-story deck with stairs, and a rear basement walkout with a patio. The third story will be partially cantilevered at the front and rear of the dwelling. Committee had before it copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Redline public notice received July the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Revised site plan, floor plans, and elevations received July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Two photographs of the subject property received June the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. Covering letter from the agent received July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Supporting materials received from the agent on July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. A tree site plan prepared by the agent received June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. We also have a staff report from urban forestry received July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. And we have correspondence in concern from five forty Rushden Road received on July the twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Through the chair, we do have the agent online, and there is an interested speaker online as well.
Thank you. Mr. Shakiri, are you there? Mr. Shakiri, are you there?
Ali Shakiri, three twenty-six Shepherd Avenue East. Good afternoon.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. We do have one person in interest, so perhaps we'll just go and speak to the person in interest to find out what exactly their interest is, and that way you can perhaps respond to questions that they may have.
Indeed.
Thank you. We've got Oren Kraus. Are you there? Oren Kraus?
Hey, yeah, sorry, I was muted before. Yeah, thanks for welcoming me to the panel. So, yeah, as I mentioned in the letter, we're the neighbors to the back of three fifteen Arlington, like, a bit, a bit to the north, I guess. Yeah.
Sir Kraus, just before you continue, I'm just going to ask you, did you have any, do you have any questions that you want the agent to respond to?
No, yeah, I just wanted to, like, review the concern I, I mentioned about the, the second-story deck, like, you know, it's relatively large and it's, like, relatively elevated. So our concern is, you know, regarding privacy for our own backyard. You know, given that it's kind of out of character for the neighborhood to have, like, a second-story deck that's, like, you know, the size of, of a first-floor, a first-story deck, like, a ground-level deck.
Okay.
And, yeah, the other minor concern, like, I know they're adding, they're planning to add a garage, which has been out of character for the neighborhood as well, like, like, some of the new renos do have them, but, like, most of the houses I've seen on, like, Arlington or Rushden, like, don't have garages, so it's just a bit out of character. But, yeah, the primary concern, like, for our, in terms of our own property, is just, like, the lack of privacy from having, like, a massive second-story deck right behind our own backyard.
Very good. Thank you very much. We'll get the agent to respond to that concern.
I'm sure if I have my support material displayed, I can explain.
Sorry, sir. Before you proceed, we just want to verify that you've got some changes that have been made. I believe it might be variance number three.
That's correct. We are reducing the, the height of the front main pedestrian entrance from one point forty-five down to one point three-nine. That was done according to our communication with the community planning, and we undertook to do this change at the hearing. So, yes, as it's displayed, we are reducing that one forty-five down to one point three-nine meter above standard.
I take it that's the only, as far as I could tell, that's the only change that is being made?
Yes, sir. That's the only change that's made.
Excellent. Thank you. I wonder if you might want to respond to the concern that the neighbor, I believe the neighbor at the rear had with regard to privacy and overlook from his, from your perspective?
Yeah, it would be helpful if I can have my support material displayed. That balcony on the second floor is a technical variance, actually. If you turn to the second page of my support material, in this case, the basement is actually considered the first floor, so that, that, that floor is below grade, but since we didn't dig too much for that floor to be considered as a basement, that main floor above it is considered the second floor. So this proposed deck is actually on the main floor, same as any other house, but because of the technicality of this proposal, now it's considered the second story, while the, the lower, the below-grade level now is considered the first floor. And I, I mean, this, this, I mean, it might sound that, you know, we have, like, a, like a large balcony on the second floor. It is not such. It's, it's just the rear balcony on access from the main floor, not on the second floor. And therefore, we thought it was appropriate. But basically, if we, if we were to, let's say, dig the basement by about, like, six foot, which is not basically reasonable over it, it's, it's going to be costly and it's going to create some technical issues, then I think two of these, I mean, variance number, variance number four is going to be entirely deleted. And perhaps variance number one is also going to be deleted, because then the, we're going to be in compliance with the floor area. But we decided to, to, to not dig the basement excessively. That would help to eliminate the shoring. It would help connecting the drains to the, to the sewer system without using of the sewer ejector. Well, less steps, less hazardous. It's going to be more energy efficient, and that's so many, so many reasons for that technical solution that we're using here. So two of the variances are a result of that, the first and last variances, including the, the area of the, the rear balcony are a result of that technical change, basically. I hope I answered the question.
I think you have. I, I appreciate the fact that the basement is actually the first floor, that's slightly lower than, than grade. Bear with me a moment. Let me just ask my colleagues to see if anybody has any questions for you, because you only have four variances that you're requesting, and we may have some questions for you. Mr. Gosh?
Yes, so in, in terms of that rear deck that is coming off the, the rear of the main floor, how high is it above the grade at, at the rear of the house?
It's about two meters.
Okay. And the property, so it looks like from the side elevations that the property has a slight grade increase towards the rear. Is that correct, and does it continue through the rest of the property, or what can you tell, tell me about that?
Sir, I'm not quite sure if I understood the question. You mean if, if the back of the property is lower than the front in grade?
Exactly, or higher than the front. Like, if you look at the side elevation, this is the rear elevation, yeah, the side elevation, it looks like the, the line that I'm assuming is grade is rising as we go to the right in this image, so it's, you know, the dirt is higher.
Slightly, slightly, about, like, maybe forty, forty centimeters.
Exactly. And is that same incline throughout the rest of the yard, or, you know, I'm, I'm trying to figure out the impact of this two-meter-off-the-ground deck on the rear neighbor? If you don't know, that's fine.
It's, it's basically very, very flat. This area is, there is not too much of topography in the area, so I'm, I'm just now looking at another map showing the, showing the topography in generality. And along Arlington and the Rushden, it's going north and south, the slope is north and south, while us and the neighbor on the back, we are almost sitting at the same geodetic elevation. So we can say the, the difference of the height between us and the neighbor on the back is marginal, not too much. And looking at the end of the backyard is almost the same level as where the rear wall of this house is sitting. So almost flat. We have almost, we almost have a flat backyard.
Okay, thank you.
I also note that there's a fair distance between this property and the property at the rear.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Let me just see if any other questions for you? None? Dylan, any more questions? None? Okay. We're going to take it into committee and come forth with a response to the application. Okay, who wants to take this one? A little bit looks like it might be it.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll take it on.
Thank you.
I, I understand the concern of the neighbor at the back. That's why I asked those questions, because, you know, saying, oh, well, but this is really, really a basement, but we do see, you know, when the basement is at grade, you know, like, there's a reason why the description is what it is. And two meters off the ground is high to have a full deck, but it is, you can see on the, on the site plan, it is set back, you know, more than twenty-five or twenty-six-odd feet from the rear lot line. So I, I'm not sure that the overlook is, is that significant into a, a yard that, you know, will have a fence guarding it. So the, when I look at the remaining variances, one to three, they're all, you know, relatively minor, or, or small compared to the variances that we can see in, in similar applications. So those variances, one to three, are certainly supportable, and then four, I think I can see myself getting to, based on the explanation, that it's a rear main-floor deck rather than...
I'm just wondering, my concern would be more with the privacy issues related
To the sides?
South sides of this deck rather than the rear.
It, it would be, if those neighbors, presumably, they would have attended if they were concerned, but, yeah.
Any other thoughts? Dylan, none? Okay. And I'll, I'll look for a motion.
Sure, I'll, I'll move to, to approve it, subject to forestry condition number one and as revised.
Thank you. Do we have a second, Mr. Dillon? Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. You have an approval, sir. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm just looking at the next three items. Item number thirty-three has about ten speakers, and then item number thirty-four and number thirty-five don't have speakers. I think maybe we should jump to thirty-four and thirty-five. I think those will happen fairly quickly, and then end with item number thirty-three. Okay?
Sounds excellent. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to skip over one for the moment and go to item number twin, thirty-four, which is twenty-two Manning Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling, a fourplex, with a front ground-floor covered porch with stairs leading to a basement, second floor, a front second and third-floor balconies, and three rear decks at all three levels with exterior staircases leading to all levels, including the basement level. The existing rear ancillary building detached garage will be demolished. There will be a total of four residential dwelling units on this lot. The committee had before it the following communications: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations; two photographs of the subject property received June the twelfth, twenty-twenty-five; we have a staff report from urban forestry received July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five; and we have correspondence in concern from twenty-one Manning Avenue received July the eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Through the chair, we do have the agent here in person.
Oh, wonderful. Hi.
There's no other speaker.
Good afternoon. Let me just, number thirty-four, okay, bear with me a second. We have one person in interest.
So through the chair, this, this person in interest has confirmed he will not be speaking at this time?
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so that solves one problem. Mr. Rafi? Are you only have one variance before us? I must say you've been sitting very patiently for a long time for one variance. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions of you or any comments to make. Mr. Reed?
It, it seems that this is, construction is well underway. I'm just wondering why we're, we're seeing this now as opposed to before construction began?
Apparently, there was a, an area where the contractor had a misunderstanding on the perimeter joint. And we went a couple inches on the neighbor's twenty and a half side. And that's where we needed that minor variance.
Right, so as construction began, it turned out that something was.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. Just another small question. I, I noticed in the basement, there's two dens. It seems a little odd.
There is one, one den with one room.
In the basement?
Yes.
So there's just a mistake on the plans?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That seemed a little bit strange, so, thanks a lot. Okay.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, can we just have your first and last name and address?
My name is Alex Maynard. The address is twenty, twenty-two Manning Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, I apologize.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? None? Okay. We'll take it into committee now, come back with a decision. Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair, I'm happy to move this. It's another one of these ones that is a sizable rebuild and there's only one small variance. And that's always really reassuring to see. And as we heard, there was a small misinterpretation, but the, the variance being requested is almost exactly what is existing on the site in terms of the footprint. Current, or previously, I guess, before this was built. So I, I think it's great to see this kind of fourplex getting put into place on an existing footprint with almost no variances. This is what the city is looking for. So I can, I commend the application and I move approval subject to urban forestry three.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Sure, happy. Mr. Gosh, thank you very much. Gosh, seconds. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir. Thank you. Okay, and now we'll go to item. Item number thirty-five, pardon me, item number thirty-five. Item number five is five Jonas Drive. And the purpose of the application, to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a complete second-story addition, a front porch with stairs, a front ground floor bay window, a rear two-story addition, and a rear ground floor deck with stairs. The existing rear ground floor addition enclosed for ender and deck will be demolished. Also, to construct a new one-story detached ancillary building, a one-car garage in the rear yard. The existing shed in the rear yard will be demolished. There will be one primary unit and one secondary suite within the basement on this lot. The committee had before it the following communication. The copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Arborist report received on the eighteenth of June, twenty twenty-five. Tree protection plan received on the eighteenth of June, twenty twenty-five. And we also have a staff report from Urban Forestry received on the twenty-third of July, twenty twenty-five.
Through you, Chair, we do have the agent online and there are no registered speakers for this item.
Thank you. Mr. Carvalho, are you there?
Carvalho, five Jonas Drive.
Carvalho? Thank you. Sorry, did we get your address?
Yes, five Jonas Drive.
Oh, thank you.
I'm the owner.
Oh, wonderful. You've got four variances in front of us. We don't have anybody in opposition, but let me just check with my colleagues to see if anybody has either a need for a presentation or perhaps any questions for you.
Okay.
No questions? No presentation needed? Oh, wonderful. Okay. You do have forestry conditions one and two, but I think all the, even though there are five variances, individually, they're quite minor, so I, I don't see any issue with this either. So I'll, we'll take it into committee and look for a, a motion from one of my colleagues. Peter, thank you.
Chair, yeah, I'm happy to do this one. I think it's completely reasonable, just putting a second story on, on this, on the house and it's, the pattern of redevelopment that we see in the, in this kind of area. I think that it's, it's quite restrained, right? It's, it's, it's basically staying within the existing footprint. And, and the variances required for it are minor with, with little to no impact on the neighbors. So I, I move approval subject to urban forestry condition one and two.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Dylan, thank you. And this, we have a motion to approve with forestry conditions one and two. Moved by Mr. Peter Reed, seconded by Mr. Dylan Reed. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Very welcome, take care.
Take care.
And now we go to item number. Item number thirty-three. Item number thirty-three is five Highborn Road. The purpose of the, pardon me, of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a third-story dormer addition, a rear three, a three-story addition with two side south balconies on the third story, a rear basement walkout, a rear ground floor deck with staircase, and also to demolish the existing rear ancillary building, a detached garage, and construct a new parking pad for two vehicular parking spaces in the rear yard of the property. There will be a total of four residential dwelling units on this lot, two units occupying the basement level and two units occupying the first, second, and third levels. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Six photographs of trees on the subject property received fourth of June, twenty twenty-five. Revised site plan received July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. And we have an N eleven agreement to end tenancy submitted by the agent on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Rental declaration submitted by the agent and received July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. We have a commenting agency report, staff report from Urban Forestry received on the twenty-third of July, twenty twenty-five. We also have correspondence in concern from Martha Forgrave, no address provided, received July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. We also have correspondence in opposition from three Highborn Road, hundred Oriole Parkway, three hundred and five to one hundred Oriole Parkway, three hundred and six to one hundred Oriole Parkway, one oh five to one hundred Oriole Parkway, four oh five to one hundred Oriole Parkway, one oh seven dash one hundred Oriole Parkway, four oh four dash one hundred Oriole Parkway, two oh seven, two oh seven, number two oh seven hundred Oriole Parkway, number two oh six, one hundred Oriole Parkway, number four, four oh seven Oriole, one hundred Oriole Parkway. We also have correspondence from President of Kilbury Oriole Co-op Limited, received on the twentieth of July. We have correspondence from a solicitor on behalf of the owner of one hundred Oriole Parkway, received the twenty-eighth of July. Another one from a solicitor on behalf of the residence at five Highborn Road Upper Unit.
Through you, Chair, we do have the agent online and there are a number of opposition speakers online and in person as well.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask the presenter to present on the screen under very late materials. It is the letter from Counselor Josh Matlow expressing concern.
Thank you.
And that's shown on the screen now.
Mr. Giorgio Lolas? Oh, are you, you're here?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So I thought you were the agent. No, no, no. Okay, so he must be online then. Thank you. Mr. Lolas, are you online? Are you available?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Hi, good afternoon. Hi, good afternoon.
Members of committee and members of committee, as with staff. Giorgio Lolas, two twenty Duncan Mills Road, representing the, as the agent for the file presented here today.
Thank you. I don't know if you heard our Secretary Treasurer asking you to, I forgot what it was you said, Sabrina, to, to do a presentation based on what's on the screen, late submission?
No, through you, Mr. Chair, I was just, you don't have this in your packages because it came in very late yesterday afternoon. So that's why I just wanted us to show it now. And I'm not sure if the applicant has seen this letter either.
Oh, this is Mr. Matlow's.
This is, yes.
Josh Matlow's.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, no, I have not received it, but with all the respect, this, this area of expertise is not me. There is a, there is a representative from owner by the name of Lily Hong. She is standing by and hopefully will be unmuted to answer these questions because this is not my field of expertise. I'm here today to represent the variances in question and to answer any or all any technical questions in respects to the opposition letters. And mostly in particular, I think the most important is three Highborn.
Thank you. One thought, and I'll let you make that decision. Given that you have a lot of opposition.
Correct.
Would, would, would it serve you better if you sought a deferral and had consultations with people in question, people in opposition, and come back at a later date? Would that help you? Or would you prefer to move on with it right now?
Thank you for that opportunity, Mr. Chair, but I believe and truly that, I believe, after discussing with the homeowner, discussing the letters of opposition from the Oriole Parkway residences, and in particular, three Highborn, which is our immediate neighbor to the south, after consulting with, with the, the current homeowner of the property, I'd like to present this alterations to the requested variances, which I believe will put everybody at bay, with the exception that, again, I cannot talk about or represent any sort of comments on the tenant act situation because I'm not an expert on that. So moving forward, we'd like to present the application as it is right now with some adjustments that we made, which I believe is a considerable adjustments. But I think that will also identify all the letters of opposition from Highborn. And if, if you, if you'd like, I can actually initiate more, more comments towards those comments as I've read all the twelve letters, including the two from the, from the owner's agent or representatives accordingly. I'd like, I'd like the site plan.
Sorry, just before you move on, did I hear you correctly when you said the alterations? Are you referring to any changes in the variance?
Yes, yes, we are.
Could we deal with that first?
Yes, we will, Mr. Chair, but I'd like to, I'd like to pull up the screen for the latest site plan that was dealt with, that we coordinated with planning regarding the permeable driveway conditions. There's a revised site plan that was submitted to the committee and, and, and planning, which planning has reviewed, which shows the rear yard parking area. There we go. Okay, so having said that, okay. So with that in question, here's what we feel is more than fair of our adjustments made to suit all these concerns. Okay, understanding and recognizing that this is an existing structure or we added to the back, we really can't really physically move the existing structure. Therefore, we're eliminating item variance number, I think it's three, the rear setback. We're going to comply with the rear setback. That means that we're going to reduce the addition, the original addition that we, that we requested for at the very back of the house of, from three point six meters, we're going to reduce it to two point five two. That's a reduction of one point one, one point one, one point four one meters. That means that I will shift the addition, or reduce the additional area, I will shift the decking forward to comply with seven point five meter setback of the rear yard. So right now, we are eliminating variance number three to comply.
Okay, bear with us while we do that.
Okay.
Elimination of variance number three. Perfect, thank you.
Correct.
And changes to the other two?
They will. And it's, it's, it's if I can follow, if I can carry on. With that itself, with that itself, and if we can pull up the site plan again, just, it's almost like it's, okay. With that itself, by pulling, by reducing, by increasing the rear yard setback, we have now recognizing a new zoning landscaping area that's true and identified by zoning as increased to now thirty-six point four six meter squared, which is a percentage of thirty point eight nine as opposed to the original of, of twenty, twenty point nine percent and fifth, and an area of twenty-one point three, twenty-one point ninety-seven meters. So we increased it by approximately, we increased it significantly as far as the landscaping area by shifting, by reducing the, the addition itself and complying with the rear yard setback. With that itself, with that itself, with the permeable driveways, we took it a step further. We know that we cannot use any, any of the parking pad area for landscaping purposes because the zoning bylaw will not recognize it. So, but this is what we decided to consider. Using the pattern in question of the permeable driveways, which is attached as a color image, we have considered and calculated this, this is not, this is above and beyond. I can't, this calculation cannot be recognized by zoning because it's, it just, it's, we've tried in the past and it just recognized. But our true landscaping area at the end of the day will be as follows. But right now, under technical reasons and recognition from the zoning bylaw, we can only reduce it to the numbers I told you, thirty-six point four six meter squared and a percentage area of thirty point eight nine. Above and beyond that, if you notice the, the parking pad, the parking pad area, the front of the cars is reduced to, to sod, to sodden area, okay? And we have taken that sodden area and we, that's for, that's for natural drainage. Again, it's not recognized by the zoning, but this, we just added it on because, again, we don't feel that we need to have such a depth in the parking pad. We can increase the soft area there. That soft area, and if you look at the colored photo, look at the colored photo of the, of the, of the permeable driveway, permeable pavers, the colored image attached to the site plan, right there, okay? Those areas there, we've, we've gone, we've gone to the extent of calculating all the little green areas in between the, the hard paved areas. That will provide natural sort of drainage instead of hard surfaces. So therefore, our recognized landscape calculations was, was recognized. Above and beyond that, which will not be recognized, but I need to advise the committee, what we're going to end up with is this. By adding the soft area in front of the parking pads and the little green areas of the permeable driveways, we're going to end up with a percentage area of sixty-two point zero three meter squared and a percentage of fifty-two point five six. Again, that is, that's not what I'm asking, that's what we're going to end up with. I can only recognize and respect committee to verify the only recognized square footage of landscaping will be thirty percent, thirty point eight nine, and an area of thirty-four point four, thirty-six point four six. Again, what, the reason I'm telling you this is taking a step forward and increasing more landscaping service that, again, I believe is fair to the, to the application itself.
If I may just interrupt you for one second, I, you know, you were going a little bit too fast for my brain.
I always do, sorry.
No problem. So variance number one, are the numbers actually now changing? And I think you mentioned certain number and I can't remember what it was.
Okay.
Your percentage would be from twenty point nine, what would it now be?
Thirty point eight nine, again.
Thirty point eight nine. And the square footage, so square meterage?
Thirty-six point four six square meters. Now, Mr. Chairman, with all the respect, sometimes when we provide calculations for areas like landscaping, zoning examiners have a different interpretation. So right now, I'm going to suggest this, I'm almost putting myself behind the eight ball that if a zoning examiner calculates more, I'll be in trouble. I, I, I won't comply. But based on our original submission of this application to the zoning examiner, he is apples to apples with our noted landscaping as, as represented. he is apples to apples with our noted landscaping as represented. What we calculated, we presented, he's confirmed him. So I'm almost confident that he'll recognize the new numbers and confirm. But again, hopefully, if the same examiner reviews the plan, again, because it's a really sort of unstable sort of condition when you have a zoning examiner, because it's all a level of interpretation. So again, how do I deal with this?
Sorry, and that interpretation is based on the fact that you're using those particular bricks for?
No, 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 no.
No?
No, no. No, that area we're just offering is additional permeable green space, but we can't calculate, okay? The area that we can technically confirm with is the numbers that I've given you, 36.46 meter squared and 30.89 percentage. I believe, again, if a same zoning examiner reviews this plan based on our original submission, he agreed with our calculations and we represented them to the variances question, to the variance noted. So the problem right now is, hopefully, he'll come back with the same numbers if I tie myself to these percentages that I have reduced it to. So I can be safe about it and say, okay, instead of 30.89%, let me allocate 30. Let me tell the committee, let me confirm 30, giving myself an 8.89 meter percentage buffer. Let me say 36 square meters as opposed to 36.46 meters, giving myself a 0.46 meter buffer. See my dilemma?
Okay, through you, Mr. Chair. Giorgio, we just need numbers and what you're revising.
I understand.
We have to move on, right? We have 10 speakers that we need to hear from. So variance number one gets amended to read 30% at 36 square meters. Variance number two remains as is, a depth of 23.29.
No, that changes, that changes now.
Okay, so what is, what is the new number for that?
All right.
Just give us a number.
Hold on, I need to explain so that you, committee, to understand certain things.
No, we just need the number.
Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We just need the number.
We just need the number.
You know, we know that variance number three is being removed. So you're meeting the requirement of the rear yard setback at 7.5 meters.
Correct.
Okay, so variance number two, you're required a depth of 17 meters. What are you proposing?
Well, with a new number, our overall, our overall building depth will now be 21.26. That's including the rear yard decking system because it's got a foundation underneath it. Our true building depth above ground is only actually 18.67 because that rear yard decking, because it has a foundation below it, gets calculated because it has a foundation. If it was the regular deck, it wouldn't be calculated in the overall depth. So I'd like to express the fact that reality, our actual true, two stories above ground, our massing is only 18.67 meters in true reality. But again, our adjustment is made to 21.26. Also, with that in question, that in question, there's also a 0.076 front yard minimum requirement that says avoid space. But again, the building depth gets calculated with, from that starting point. So there's a 0.76 meter area that is not longer, that's not being used, but it starts measurements from there.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Reed.
Can I say, given these changes, which are fairly substantial and will definitely have to shift the interior design and that there's not entire certainty about what a zoning examiner would decide are the numbers for the landscaping, I really feel like this should be deferred so that we can get proper plans with the new thing, fully detailed and everything. I don't think I can make a decision based on these changes, which will have structural implications for the building. You know, we don't know what the new layouts will be. We have no idea whether, how this is going to be organized. We don't know how the rear yard landscaping will look. I feel like this needs to be deferred so that we can have full plans based on these new numbers.
Mr. Lullis, I take it you've heard Mr. Reed and I'm in agreement with him. I think this particular application, you've got so many changes and it's becoming a little bit more confusing and there are a lot of people anxiously waiting to weigh in. I think it would serve you much better if we deferred this application. You came through with a clean list of variances you're requesting and we take it from there at a later date. I think you, it will serve you better and it'll serve the members of the community better as well. I think it's becoming more difficult for us to figure out exactly what's going on. So with that in mind, I'm not sure, bear with me a moment, can we?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I mean, we do have registered speakers that we would have to speak to about the deferral, right? If the applicant, again, if the applicant is saying no to a deferral, do you base your decisions on the revised proposal? Or you can still put in a motion for deferral, right? Like you have options here, so.
You can ask the applicant first.
Okay, let's ask the applicant first. We'll have to go to each of the speakers as well.
Right.
And then, and then you can go into motion.
And if we choose, if the agent disagrees with the deferral, but we feel that the deferral is appropriate, we still need to consult with all the?
I would still reach out to each of the speakers only because they have been in attendance since 3:00 PM this afternoon.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Lullis, have you heard all of that?
Absolutely, yes, I have. I do understand your points. And my point of view is very simple, but I do, I do respect the neighbors being, awaiting this time. We've all been waiting to hear this. I really can't make this, can I make a, in the meantime, well, are you going to address the concerns of the neighbors? Are you going to just talk with them as far as asking for a referral, giving me the time to talk to the owner?
So I think I've missed some of it. The sound isn't the greatest in this room. Are you in favor of a deferral or are you talking about consulting with the owner first?
I'd like to, I'd like to present that opportunity to him instead of making a decision for him.
Are you able to speak to the owner now?
Yes, I just need two, three, five minutes.
Thank you. And I take it he's been listening or they have been listening?
I, yes, sir, I believe so.
Okay. You've got five minutes and thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Five-minute break.
I'm sorry, these plans are going to be totally different. We can't really.
In the meantime, could staff pull back up the councillor's letter? Because I'm not certain that I reviewed the entirety of it because we saw the top part. Can you just scroll to the bottom? So I read all of this. Can you scroll down? Okay, thank you. Without seeing the signature, I just wasn't sure. Thank you. I, are we still on? So I will say, I tend to disagree with the idea of a deferral if the applicant doesn't want to defer. I'm not in favor of imposing deferrals. And then it becomes a question of what do you do based on how they've presented this to us. But that's my difference of opinion. I just wanted to.
I'm not saying necessarily to impose it. I'm asking the?
No, 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 I agree. I just.
I don't feel like I can make a decision. Like the landscaping is going to be quite different. I have no idea how it's going to lay out. I don't know what I'm approving.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Hi.
I apologize for all the confusion, with all due respect. Again, from a personal, I wouldn't say. So talking to the homeowner, yes, we will defer it. We will present, which will present much more clearer site plan with the new numbers moving forward. And again, the interior alterations doesn't really matter here or just doesn't really affect the interior. It's the envelope we're talking, we're talking about building depth. Doesn't matter what happens inside the building. So at the end of the day, our true benchmark is going to be the site plan again, which will be revised for our next hearing date.
Thank you. So essentially, you're in favor of a deferral and you'll come back at some point with much cleaner, a cleaner application?
Well, it'll be one variance less.
I'm sorry, I didn't miss that piece?
It will be one variance less.
Okay. Whatever changes you're making, it'll come back as a much cleaner, simpler application from what I understand.
Correct.
Correct, thank you. Thank you so much. We'll now go to all the folks in opposition and inform them and see what their positions are as well. Thank you.
Yeah, through the speaker.
All right.
In person?
In person, we have one person. Thank you very much. So you've, name an address, please.
Julian Newberg, Unit 407, 100 Oriole Parkway, Toronto, Ontario, M5 P2G8.
Thank you. You've heard the discussion.
Right, yes, I did.
And so essentially, the only question we have of you at this point, an answer would be yes or no. Are you in favor of a deferral?
Could I just ask a question? Could I just defer to our council's advice? I guess we have a lawyer for the board that's representing us, so whatever they recommend, I'm fine with.
You can, but at the end of the day, the applicant has now decided to defer. So the response that we need from people in opposition is either yes or no. It won't change the deferral as such.
Okay, so the deferral's going ahead.
It will, but we need to have that input from every person.
Sure, that's fine then.
Thank you.
Okay.
As you can see, this is one of those very puzzling.
What's the outcome of this, though? I guess, will, will we, how will we be notified, I guess?
In the same way that I presume that you were previously notified.
We were not notified, actually. We never received a statutory notification with regards to this application. To the best of my understanding, our co-op never received a notification. So we were caught behind the eight ball, basically.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, so we're just.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The process is, is that public notice goes to landowners within 60 meters of the subject site. And if there's tenants within a building, then it's up to that landowner to notify the tenants.
Which our co-op, I believe, which owns the property, did not receive.
And then there's a sign posted on the property.
Yeah, I think it was just inadvertently, one of our residents noticed that there was a sign posted on the property, but that's how we found out, not through a notification.
The co-op should have received the notification.
Yeah, that's my understanding. And we did, it's my understanding that we did not receive that notification.
Perhaps what I might suggest is, since we've got this little space now.
Right.
That you speak to whoever's in charge at the board, perhaps at the co-op. Inform them that they haven't done their job, which is to inform all the residents.
Well, they didn't get the notice, they say. That's what they say. They never got the notice.
Sounds a little strange, but I'm assuming the city has done the appropriate thing of informing everybody.
Okay, I'm just telling you what I've been told myself, so just not to misrepresent things.
Thank you. We hope everything will work out well.
So do I.
Thank you so much for your patience and thank you for your presence.
Okay, are we done then, I guess?
Yes, for now. I've got to speak to all the other folks.
Oh, I see. Maybe I'll just stay and listen to the other?
Oh, by all means, by all means.
Yeah, sure, okay, I'll do that, sure.
Sure, thank you. Out of the loop. Thank you. Can we move to the next person, please?
The online speaker.
Good afternoon, it's Liam Bell-Gardson, Council to Kilbury Oriole Co-op Limited, speaking.
Hi, good afternoon. So you've heard all the deliberations here.
Yeah.
Again, the only question we have for you is, are you in favor or not in favor of a deferral?
Yes, Kilbury Oriole Co-op Limited consents to the deferral.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much. Thank you for your patience. Moving to the next person.
Seven Highborn Road, you've been unmuted.
Hi, good afternoon. Oh, it's good evening now.
Hi, Mr. Ivan Garcia, you have been unmuted.
Hello, Mr. Garcia.
Hello.
Hi, have you been listening to the deliberations?
Yes, so I'm not in, yeah, I'm in favor to be delayed.
Thank you very kindly. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. Next.
The address at 100 Oriole Parkway, Unit 207, you have been unmuted.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. I take it you've also been listening to the deliberations. So we only have one question for you. Are you in favor of, I'm sorry, are you in favor of deferral or not?
My understanding is that nobody in our building, including our president, received any notification of this. I am in favor of deferral.
Thank you very kindly.
Sorry, first and last name?
Mark Reese.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The address at Three Highborn Road, you've been unmuted.
Yes, hi, my name is Alvin Leong, Three Highborn Road.
Hi, Mr. Leong. The question to you as well, are you in favor or not in favor of a deferral?
I'm in favor of deferral. I would like to see the fully revised plan of the proposals as opposed to this last minute change. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for your patience. Next person.
Hello, it's Elizabeth Savelli and I am in favor of a deferral.
Oh, I think we missed your full name and address.
Oh, Elizabeth Savelli, 100 Oriole Parkway, Apartment 406.
Thank you very kindly. Thank you, take care.
Thank you.
Next person.
100 Oriole Parkway, Unit 202, you've been unmuted. Mr. Ken Johnson, go ahead.
Mr. Johnson, are you there? Mr. Johnson, are you there?
Mr. Ken Johnson, you have been promoted to become a panelist, which means you have full access to your mute and unmute buttons. Go ahead.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Ken Johnson, are you there? Can you hear us?
Move on, okay.
Oh, okay. We can move on to the next person.
Hi, Kathleen Levett, you've been unmuted.
Thank you, good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Levett and I am the paralegal for the tenant that is in possession of the upper unit at Five Highborn. I'm also here speaking with authorization for the tenant who vacated the lower rental unit of this same property.
Thank you. Question to you as well is, are you in favor or not in favor of a deferral?
I will be, or I'm speaking on behalf of both the ladies, but I do have a couple of questions because my client is residing.
I'm sorry, we don't have any time for questions at this point. The question really for you is, are you in favor of a deferral or not? Because we can't answer any other questions at this stage.
When would, when would a hearing be rescheduled if it's deferred?
I believe at the earliest next opportunity.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I can answer that question. The applicant obviously has some work to do. And when they're ready to come back to a hearing, then they'll notify the city and then we'll put them on to the next available hearing, probably not until October at this point.
Okay, thank you. Just for my own rescheduling, thank you very much. And my, my client is a tenant in the building that we're all talking about. So she would like to know, you know, what's happening here. So she was, served these documents in bad faith. We'll deal with it at the landlord-tenant board, but my client will be highly opposed when this does return.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next.
Jacqueline Delang, you've been unmuted.
Yes, hello.
Hi, good afternoon, Jacqueline.
Hi.
Name an address, please.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Delang and I am currently the tenant of 15 years living at Number Five Highborn Road. And I am opposing the application.
So I'm sorry, are you in favor of a deferral?
I am in favor of the deferral.
Thank you kindly. Take care.
Thank you.
Yeah, address at 100 Oriole Parkway, Unit 305, you've been unmuted.
Hi, my name is Judy Clark. I live at 305, 100 Oriole Parkway and yes, I am definitely in favor of a deferral. in favor of a deferral. It's been a long afternoon.
Indeed, it has. Thank you for your patience. Take care.
So through the chair, I, I could not reach the address at 6 Highborn Road. He was speaking in interest at this time, so, and then, and that's all, the speakers we have.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience and your hard work. Thank you. So we have deferral. We take it into committee. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Yeah, I'll move that we defer this application to give the applicant time to provide revised site plans and a revised notification.
Should there also be consultation with?
And, and also, yes. And also to consult with the neighbors. Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I think it might be good also to, I mean, there's the variances, issues, right, in the application, but there's the very real landlord-tenant issues. And I know they don't really respond to what we're doing, but if, I think I would like to include that in some way, that we would like to see them proceed with addressing, or I don't know. But I think it's kind of an elephant in the room.
Through you, Mr. Chair, it might, through you, Mr. Chair, it, it might just be a cover letter from the applicant outlining kind of what has occurred up until now and what they continue to do during the deferral and where they're at once the application is back before committee of adjustment. So it just gives a bit of a history.
Yeah.
But we have to be careful because we can't get involved in that.
Certainly, but I think that would be helpful.
Perhaps a cover letter just explaining what has occurred from start to the point of the next hearing.
Yeah, I, I would be reticent to put that in our decision as for why there's a deferral because that could be an overreach.
Can we put it as a note?
Yeah, a note that we.
I've done that, I've seen that done before.
Through you, Mr. Chair, a cover letter is, is something that the applicant can submit as, as materials to make an application complete. So it's really not quite out of line. It, it could just be that a, a cover letter is submitted, consult with the residents and make the, like, the revisions that have been stated today, if not further revisions. Yeah.
And provide full site plan, revised site.
Well, they'll have to get a revised zoning review and, and revised plans, right? So we don't really have to outline what the cover letter says. It's just a detailed cover letter.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Sabrina. What Sabrina said.
Whatever Sabrina says, I agree. Whatever Sabrina says, that's it. Thank you. So, we had a motion from Dylan, was it your motion? Okay. And I take it everybody's written down exactly what Sabrina said, so that's great. Do we have a second? Thank you, Peter, thank you.
Just one other question, I guess, will, everything.
Not at the moment, thank you. We have a motion on the floor for deferral, moved by Dylan and seconded by Peter. All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Lolo, Lolo, sorry. Are you still there?
Yes, I am.
I take it you've heard? So there was.
Yes, sir.
This application has been deferred.
Yes.
And we encourage you to get a very clean application for the next round. And we also encourage you to consult with people who have expressed an interest or expressed opposition so that you minimize any, any opposition that you may face when you come back again.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, even with the proposals that I was trying to express today, I still, I still am going to have opposition, but we will engage with them.
Thank you.
But I don't, we'll do, we'll do our due diligence.
Thank you. Just do your best. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of committee.
Thank you. Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
And with that, we conclude today's hearings. Thank you.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, then we're adjourned at 6:37 PM.
Wow. Thank you very much.
Could I just ask one question now? All information will still be, I guess, uploaded, I guess, to the existing file, I guess, or whatever, as far as.